All right, if you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you can remain standing, we have Doug Harden, our police chaplain, is going to give us our vocation this evening.
Joining me as we pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you this evening, God. And Father, I pray that our hearts and our lives, Lord, even our minds wouldn't take this lightly, God, this privilege and this honor that you've given to us. Father, throughout mankind's history, God, you've desired to show yourself to us in many different ways. Father, and even tonight, Lord, I have to believe it's no different. That, God, as we begin this meeting, Lord, we seek you, your wisdom, your grace, Lord, your judgments for us. Knowing our weaknesses, Lord, knowing that we fall short in many areas, Lord, we come to you in asking for your wisdom, for your guidance, God. And that, Father, above anything else, Lord, no matter whether our desires are answered tonight or not, Father, may we leave this place knowing that you are God. That, Father, you love us, you care for us, and you want a personal relationship with us in every single way, in our city, in our homes, in our families, Father, personally with us every single day. So, Father, we pray that you might be with us tonight. You would have your Holy Spirit upon this place and upon these individuals, Lord, who will speaking and listening, God. We give you this time, and we ask, Lord, that you would be God over it. Have your way with us, Lord, your will be done. What better prayer can we pray than that? So we thank you for being here, Lord, we thank you for hearing us. We pray all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Erylinda Martinez, if you could please come up here and join me at this time. Just go ahead and walk around and come over on this side.
Thank you so much.
Standing to my right is a very special lady that we've been very fortunate to have here in the Santa community for the last 11 years. She, let me give you a little bit of her background. She received a bachelor's degree from UC Riverside, and then she went over to UCLA to receive a master's degree in Counselor of Education. And then from there, she decided to pursue a doctorate over at USC. And so she has a doctorate from USC, a master's from UCLA, and a bachelor's from UC Riverside. After that, prior to her tenure here at San Ana College, she served as Vice President for Student Affairs and Assistant Superintendent for Cerritos College over in Norwalk. Professionally, she has served here in San Ana on many different organizations such as the San Ana Workforce Investment Board, the KidWorks Board of Directors. Also, she was mentor on the Association of California Community College Administrators. She's also a member of the Santa College Chapter for the Latina Leadership Network. She's been recognized in her professional civic contributions by the National Council on Student Development, the Greater Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, the National Hispanic Business Women's Association. And recently, she was named Woman of the Year in the 69th Assembly District by Assembly Member Tom Daley. And what I can tell you is, look, she's always smiling, she's probably smiling right now. She always has open arms and an open heart. I can't tell you how many students she has helped because she is so passionate, so committed, so hardworking, and she really, really cares for the students and the student body. So I want her to say a few words before I present her this proclamation, but I'm telling you, she's going to be missed. And it's not the 11 years, 11 years is quite some time, but it's what she's done in those 11 years. As President of Santa College, she's elevated the institution. It was a fine institution before, but it's a better college today. And her fingerprints are over so much of those improvements. And it goes to every single thing San Ana College does. You know, Erylinda just is pushing with all her might. And, you know, she's humble, and she's soft, but don't take that for anything other than a lioness. She really makes things happen. And I know some of the board members are here, and I don't know if we could possibly get some of them to come on up, and I want to get a group photo with her in a moment. And also, I'd like to invite the City Council to come up. She's done a great job for 11 years, and I want to take a group photo. But before that, let's say a few words, and I'll give you your proclamation.
Okay. Thank you so much. I was blessed to come to Seventeenth of Bristol, and I just have to tell you that there is a gem in the city. The faculty set a really high bar for academic achievement. The staff take great pride in their work and the appearance of the college and the work that they do. And our administrators are selfless. They're there when we need them 24/7. So I couldn't ask for a better team for that college. But more than that, this is the year of our 100th, our centennial. We've been celebrating all year. For the first time in history, we had fireworks at the college last September. But the thing I've really enjoyed is our tagline for 100 years. Our tagline has been "A celebrated past," and we certainly have celebrated that. But the other part of our tagline is "Boundless future." And part of that future I will share with you is so exciting. We are one of the community colleges that was identified by the American Bar Association for the Pathway to Law. We're one of 15 colleges that has been approved to offer a baccalaureate degree right here in Santa Ana, and that will start in the fall of '17. And finally, I will add that if you love Johnson Center, you'll love it even better. We're tearing it down this summer and building a new one and breaking ground for a new science center. So while I've made my contribution for 11 years, I just want you to know that San Ana College's future is bright, and it's because of the community support and certainly the city's support that we've received to be that way. So thank you, Mayor, very much.
Thank you, Erylinda. And here's a proclamation recognizing you for all your efforts and accomplishments at the college. Know that you will be missed, and that's just a tribute to all the great work that you've done. So with that, let's... Why don't we stand right here and get everybody move up, and let's turn around and get some photos. And everybody will get close. Thank you. Take care.
Yeah, you are. Dave, I don't think you need to go very far because I think the next presentation includes you. So, good evening, everybody. I want to see if I can have the following folks come up here and join me. Dr. Dave Chapel, Ann Andres, Helen Alberts, Stuart Fuller, John Gailey, Ian Guajardo, Chuck Holt, Alan Lane, Nindi Mahal, Ava Matthews, Peter Murtaugh, Vivian Owen, and Sam Vu. So I have the honor in recognizing the following San Ana residents for their years of service on the Orange County Grand Jury. And, you know, as we make this recognition, I want to thank them personally because I know it's quite a bit of time and effort and participation and taking this role very seriously. So I want to thank you on behalf of all the residents here in San Ana for all the serious work that you do. And let me tell you a little bit about what they do. But these, you know, the honor that we have and the pride that we have are these folks are all San Ana residents. And the Grand Jury is unique in its function and selection process compared to other juries, including appellate juries and trial juries and federal grand juries. The Orange County Grand Jury consists of 19 members who serve for a term of one year and report both on criminal and civil matters within the county. The civil investigation portion requires a lot of time, and this body is the civil or the watchdog of the county and includes examination of all aspects of county government. So in essence, they're the ones that make sure that all of us, both elected, appointed agencies, follow the rules. And they make sure that standards are kept very high, and they make sure that everybody plays by the same, at the same playing field as well. They also oversee special districts to ensure that there's honesty and efficiency going on, and the investigations are conducted when needed. And it also oversees jurisdictions like cities and agencies within cities and counties. These investigations are conducted in cooperation with departments of the county. The committee can ask for support and advice from the Superior Court, the DA's office, county council, and outside consultants as well. It's also appropriate for any private citizen or county official or county employee to present a written complaint to the Grand Jury for its investigation and review. So any of us can solicit the Grand Jury for assistance when we see a problem in our community. And this body reviews it, analyzes it, and makes a decision after review to see if it's worthy of investigation and follow-up as well. On the last day, or, excuse me, on the last day of the year, the service of Grand Jury is required by law to submit all final reports to the presiding judge of the Superior Court. The Grand Jury reports are available at the Orange County Law Library and the Grand Jury's website. The Grand Jurors have a complex and diverse responsibility to make serious decisions. We applaud our San Ana residents specifically for their role on the Grand Jury and for the excellent demonstration of civic leadership and the time and commitment and dedication that they've shown. So for us, it's, you know, it's a prideful moment to know that our residents play a very significant and important role in this process. And again, they represent the ethical standard that we want, we want all our public agencies, all our elected officials, and everybody who has to deal with the public trust to ensure that, you know, our laws are followed, people are acting appropriately. And it makes me very proud that folks that are well-respected and well-recognized in our city lend their time, again, and devote their background and their expertise to ensure that our county officials, our city officials, and everybody else continues to do the right thing. And so with that, I'd like you to join me in giving them a big round of applause for all the great work that they do. So I think I mentioned everybody's name, but, you know, I know some of the members of the Grand Jury that reside in San Ana weren't able to join us, but let me see if I can hand out some of them. Is Helen Alberts with us? Helen, thank you so much. I don't see Ann, so she probably thought we were going to get started a little later. I see Dave Chapel here. Dave, thank you very much. How about Stuart Fuller? John Gailey? Ian Guajardo?
Right here.
Thank you. Chuck Holt? We'll make sure he gets this. Alan Lane? Thank you, Alan. Nindi Mahal? Mr. Mahal, thank you. I think everybody up here has them, and those that weren't able to join us, we'll make sure that we get this to them. Would somebody like to say a few words on behalf of the Grand Jurors from San Ana? We'd love, I'm sure our residents would love to hear from you. Ian, please. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, serving on the Grand Jury for the year was actually a benefit and very, very rewarding for me to serve. Not only do I live in San Ana, but I was born in San Ana. But at the same time, I was the youngest person that has ever served on the Grand Jury. I was 36-years-old at the time. And it was a privilege to work with my Grand Jury compatriots. There was 19 of us, some of them have passed away, unfortunately. We attend the Grand Jury Association luncheons every quarterly. We see each other, and we talk about issues and concerns in the city of San Ana and the county. And it was absolute pleasure to serve on the Grand Jury. I encourage other people to serve because we're able to do things that no one understands how the county operates, the cities operate. It was an absolute pleasure to see how government really works in the public view and behind the scenes. And I just, it was a pleasure to work with all these fine people here and serve in our county and our city. And I just want to thank you for that.
Dr. Chapel, you sure? Okay, because you represent two hats, a former trustee from the college and also a member of the Grand Jury. So with that, I want to thank you all for all your fine work, and we... Sure, Mr. Mahal, please. Come on up.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Everything has been said properly. The only thing I want to add, please do apply for Grand Jury. We cannot find enough qualified people to serve on the jury. Like, I have been there three, three times. They want me again. So I request that, it's a great honor to be on the jury. You get to know the county, the city. And my three terms, I found the city, the county offices, everything is being run very well. So it's a good feeling that we are in very good hands. But we do need people applying for that service, and I encourage every one of you.
Thank you all for that pitch because we need some folks to cycle in, right, and make sure that they participate. And I'm glad Ian referred to it as patriots because it really is something that involves civic duty, civic responsibility, and it really is a form of patriotism. So thank you all very, very much for your service. We all applaud you and love you for the work that you do. Thank you very much. And I think I have the next one as well, and I'm seeing if the folks from the San Ana Soccer Club can join me up here. Juan Garcia, and let me see, the coaches are Abel Garcia, Peter Garcia, Flavio Salas, Daisy Garcia, a lot of Garcias, Evangelina Garcia, Orbelin Camargo, Marisol Garcia. I think we've brought the entire Garcia family. Yanin Garcia and Aurora Salas. And all the players with them as well. Juan, adelante. So I'll wait till everybody comes up here. And we have, and everybody can wait, we're going to have a presentation for former Senator Lou Correa, who I see in the audience. How you doing, Lou? Nice to see you. We'll have you up here in just a few minutes. Hold tight, don't go anywhere. So as they're walking up, let me go ahead and tell you a little bit about who we're recognizing in addition tonight. We're recognizing the San Ana Soccer Club that was created and funded, excuse me, founded by Juan Garcia in 1983 in an effort to give youth a fun, safe, and constructive way of occupying their time. And the group, over the past 32 years, has provided a community service to all the kids in San Ana, and it serves as a nonprofit that's been able to provide children with the opportunity to play soccer, and this is the best part, at minimal, reduced, or no cost at all. So it is a league that's different from other leagues in the city because we have a lot of leagues, both adult and youth, and there's normally, obviously, fees involved, just like there is in Pop Warner, just like there is in Little League. But San Ana Soccer League, led by Juan Garcia, has really done their best to try to fundraise and provide the same opportunities to kids who can't afford your traditional or conventional leagues where fees are sometimes just, you know, beyond the cost of some of the families that have a child or multiple children that want to play soccer. And we all know that sports is the best way to, you know, make sure that kids are on the positive, on a positive track. The club has also provided young players with positive activities, launched them into careers such as firemen, police officers, doctors, just to name a few. So a lot of the alums from, you know, this program have gone on to do a lot of great things. And we're recognizing tonight the managers, coaches, and players for their time and their dedication to serving the youth of San Ana through soccer and making a difference over these 32 years. I have been privileged to know Juan for a few years since I've been on the council, and I've admired his work that he does because he really does do it for the benefit of the families. And like I said, we have so many children that are at that age where they want to play soccer, and sometimes the fees are just beyond the reach of their parents. So Juan does a lot to make sure that those folks aren't left behind. Juan, quisiera que vengas aquí y nos des unas palabras. Hablé un poquito de la trayectoria de San Ana Soccer Club, pero quisiera que tú en tus palabras nos expliques un poquito de lo que hicistes en estos 32 años. Adelante.
In English, if you'd like. Bueno, les voy a decir en español porque me siento más cómodo al hablar, pero también puedo hablar inglés. Durante los 32 años vamos a cumplir 33 años trabajando para la comunidad de Santana. Yo vivo aquí en Santana, y un día me crucé por el Parque Santa Anita donde estaban entrenando unos niños ahí. Y por cierto, el grupo que yo agarré ese día les metieron como 20 goles. Entonces, pues me interesó al estarlos viendo ahí y hablé con la persona que estaba encargada. El señor ya murió, se llamaba Ricardo Villanueva. Él fue el que inició los equipos de niños aquí en Santana. Recuerdo que tenía como, él dirigía como 10 equipos porque no había ninguna persona adulta que le pudiera ayudar. Entonces me ofrecí yo, inclusive, cuando yo empecé, no había ninguna liga aquí en Santana de niños. Tuve que llevármelos a Los Ángeles. Aunque suena increíble y muy riesgoso, agarraba 15 niños y me los llevaba hasta Los Ángeles a jugar en las ligas de Los Ángeles, en un solo carro. Antes no estaba prohibido que los SITBOS y nada de eso, por eso hasta amontonado los llevaba de ahí. Ahorita gracias a Dios, a mi esposa me comprende lo que estoy haciendo por la comunidad y es una de las que me ayuda. Tengo a mis hijos que me están ayudando ahorita, otras personas que se han interesado en el programa de nosotros. Todos los entrenadores, they are certified coaches in Southern California. Me interesó trabajar con la comunidad de Santana porque, por los que no lo sepan, la ciudad de Santana tiene como 20,000 niños registrados en el fútbol de Estados Unidos. Es la ciudad más grande con niños que juegan fútbol en todo el país. Y por eso, en lugar de irme a otra ciudad a donar mi tiempo, por qué no lo dono donde yo vivo. Y eso es lo que hemos hecho hasta ahorita. Como mencionaba el concejal Sarmiento, de nuestro grupo han salido muchos profesionistas, doctores, abogados, policías, bomberos, de todo, y aún siguen estudiando en las universidades de aquí de Estados Unidos. Pues es todo lo que puedo decirles. Aquí tienen parte del grupo de nosotros. Por ahí anda Alan, Allen es el más chiquito por ahí, por ahí lo tienen. Es de los, de tres años, también es ya jugador. Y pues uno de los más grandes, allá tenemos dos allá, es Misael Fermín, de los más grandes ahorita en la actualidad, pero tenemos más grandes. Y ahorita los que jugaban hace 10 años atrás con nosotros ya regresaron con sus niños y los tienen con nosotros. So esto va creciendo, y ojalá pues nos sigan soportando en la ciudad de Santana, proporcionando lo que necesitamos para llevar a cabo el programa.
You know, in a nutshell, he's just thanking the city for all its support. The fact, he was telling us about the history, about, you know, when he started, he used to take kids in his own vehicle to go play in soccer leagues in Los Angeles because there weren't any here. And he somehow fit 15 in one car. So that in of itself, I guess they don't make cars as big as they used to anymore. But he also, I think something that I missed, forgot to say when I was introducing him was something really important. His coaches go through a thorough background check. And that's real important for those of us who are parents and have children that spend time with coaches and other players and just making sure that it's a safe environment. So thank you, Juan, because that's something that, you know, sometimes we overlook, but this has been a very conscientious director of a league, so hopefully we have others who do that. And again, for San Ana, our city is so young, it's probably has one of the youngest populations in the country at about 27.6. We have more kids registered in youth soccer than any other city in the country, right around 20,000. So that's something significant. So for all that, let's give all the coaches and players and everybody who works with San Ana Soccer Club a big round of applause and thank them. And before we leave, we're going to take a selfie, all right? Why don't we take a selfie together? Is that all right? Okay, let's do that. Everybody cram in here. I just learned how to take selfie. My daughter does, so, all right. Let's get close. Do you see yourself? All right, there you are. All right, the only guy that looked bad was me. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and congratulations. Now I want to call upon Senator Lou Correa. Lou, are you, I think you're, come on down, we're going to change the agenda a bit and
So evening, you know, today's a very unique opportunity where we get to highlight and recognize one of our own for somebody doing something which we would all like to happen. A lot of times, we talk about doing good, we talk about, we, if we were in situations, this is how we would respond, and frequently, we hope that we would respond that way. But many times, we're not really tested. Many times, we're thinking in our own head the possibilities. But when that opportunity does present itself, how do we respond? To me, that is the fabric of somebody's character. That is the fabric of an individual and how compassionate they are to serve others. Not because people are watching, not because people are talking about it, because it's the right thing to do. In the same token, when we come across those examples, it's imperative that we highlight them and that we do showcase that, we do appreciate it, and that we do need citizens like this that go above and beyond even when they're putting themselves at risk. So it's my pleasure this evening to really showcase Senator Correa as a local hero. He's credited for saving seven lives in the city of San He's credited for saving seven lives in the city of Santa Ana. He was able to communicate with a grandmother and a couple of children to get out of the house, as he picked up a water hose to start firefighting. He was able to put the fire out before anybody got there. He was the first responder. And this is not a small little fire. As you can see the picture in the back, there's a lot of burnt ash on the outside, and this is on the porch itself. Can you imagine what the inside looks like? And yet, he stepped in to really want to make a difference. Please join me in giving him a round of applause. Senator Correa, thank you for your bravery, thank you for your assistance in our community, and I'd like to honor you, and before I do, I'd like to ask you for a few words.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and council members and citizens, first I want to thank you very much for this presentation and recognition today. I'm very humbled and touched. And I think very briefly, what I want to say to folks out there is, when you see something that may be wrong, stop, look, and listen. When you see somebody that's being picked on, please stop and aid that individual. When you see a possible crime, when you see a person that's in distress, please stop and help. When I was driving down at ten-thirty in the morning, I was late for a meeting. And so when I saw this fire erupting out of the corner of my eye, my first thought is, I better stop, but I know I'm going to be late, I got to stop. And I think all of us that have been out there and seen, and have seen things happen, have those same mind processes that we go through, which is, do I stop and help or not? We have to stop and help our brothers and sisters, our friends and neighbors.
En español unas palabras, yo sé que nuestra cultura nos enseñan que no nos andemos metiendo en lo que no nos importa. Nos enseñan, no anden de comadres, right? Just mind your own business and look forward. Pero de veras esta es una situación donde nos enseña que al contrario, tenemos que respetar y ayudar a la comunidad. Si vemos una persona que necesita ayuda, vamos a parar y hacer eso parte de nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much, and I am again very touched and humbled.
Senator Correa, before I do give you present and recognition, I do see that you have a couple of family members here in the house. Will you introduce them, please?
Yes, I have my lovely wife Esther and my daughter. Would you please stand? My son Adam, and Alex is somewhere out there.
Right in the corner somewhere.
Oh, there he is in the corner.
On behalf of the City of Santa Ana, the mayor, the city council, would like to recognize Lou Correa for this courageous act in saving lives in the city of Santa Ana from a house fire.
I now call on Councilwoman Michelle Martinez to make our next presentation.
If I could please have Veronica, co-sy with Donate Life Ambassador, please join me up here. As Veronica is approaching, today I'm doing a recognition of designating April 2016 at DMV Donate for Life California. So this November will be a decade that I've been on this city council, and I've been very passionate. And every single year, I've had the opportunity and honor to really recognize Donate Life. And I got involved nine years ago, because my mother was seeking a transplant, a kidney transplant. And so I too went to the DMV, and I always bring my ID to show that I'm also a donor, and the importance of why you should be a donor. My mother passed away in 2010, and a week later, you know, she got the notice that there was a kidney transplant, she was eligible for a kidney. Unfortunately, she passed away, and I get very emotional, because my mother was on the waiting list for five years. But every year, she was very hopeful. And we have many residents in this community and across California in the United States. And so it's a great pleasure to always recognize Donate for Life and the great activities they do, and I'm not sure if they still continue them. At Cal State Fullerton, where I'm a Titan, and we do a 5K walk and run, to really just bring exposure and access about Donate Life. And so I'm going to say a little bit of the wheresthes, but I want you to share, as an ambassador in your personal experience, what Donate Life means. Veronica?
I'm Sheri.
Sheri, okay.
This is Blanca.
Blanca, so Veronica is not with us here, so no one told me that, but with that being said, it's okay. We have two lovely people here that can testify and really speak about Donate Life. Please.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening. My name is Sheri Gadia, and I am a donor mom. This is Blanca, and Blanca is also a donor mom. I'm very humbled and honored to be here, as thirty years ago, I met my husband here in Santa Ana. We got married here in Santa Ana, and our children were very involved in NJV, Pop Warner football, all of the sports here. And I have deep roots and love for the city of Santa Ana. So to be here, I have to tell you, I wish I wasn't in the position I am to be telling you that I am a donor mom. I would much rather have my son with us. But I think it's so important to let you know what donation really means. There's over a hundred and thirty thousand people sitting on a waiting list, like Michelle's mom was, waiting for a transplant. And if you can only imagine when they were going through that, I'm sure Michelle prayed and hoped and wanted so badly for that transplant to take place. But in order for that to happen, there have to be donors. And what I want you to understand is that only less than three out of every thousand deaths that occur die in a way that they can be a donor. And so it's very, very important that we increase the amount of donors on the registry. It's very important that you think about your decision and let your family know of your decision. But one of the other things that is so important is that you understand what it means to a donor family. You know, losing our son was devastating, and it was the most painful thing we've been through ever, and I hope none of you have to ever go through anything like that. But the blessing in it is that we have been able to actually meet our son's recipients, all three of his major recipients. I've heard my son's heartbeat loud and strong in a single father who lives up in LA, who would have left a two-year-old child without a father or a mother. And so it's those things that come out of being a donor or a donor family. And so I just, I want to give you a hug, Michelle, because I know where you come from and what that means to you. And I want to let you know that both Blanca and I will continue on behalf of our son and daughter, sharing the story of donation, in hopes that other people in your mom's situation do receive the organ that they so badly need. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Buenos tardes, yo también estoy aquí representando a Juan Legacy. Mi hija Sandra pasó, falleció hace siete años, y ella salvó cuatro vidas. Es muy importante. Yo era una de las mamás que no quería, nadie queremos que nuestros hijos se vayan, ¿verdad? Pero cuando ella llegó a mi casa y me dijo que era donante, yo no lo tomé muy como en serio, porque se supone que los papás nos morimos primero que los hijos, pero no es así. Es muy importante, mi hija salvó vidas, es muy importante que nos registremos, que estemos en la lista, porque hasta eso es un privilegio ser donante. No todos lo podemos hacer. Gracias. Mayor, is it possible, someone can translate that, that our translator was going to come down?
I'll go ahead and try to capture briefly. Blanca, ¿verdad es su nombre? Mrs. Blanca, who is here, she is a donor mom, as was mentioned. Seven years ago, she mentioned that her daughter passed away and was able to save seven lives. She said that when her daughter came home one day and shared with her that she had decided to become a donor, she was surprised, and she says, as a parent, we never think that our children will leave this earth before us. So it was somewhat of moving for her, but to know that her daughter saved four lives is something that is impactful for her, and she just encourages every person to sign up to be a donor as well, because lives can and will be saved.
Thank you, Councilman Benavides. And with that being said, I do have some wheresthes, so please bear with me. So whereas more than a hundred and twenty-three thousand individuals nationwide, and almost twenty-one thousand in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. Every ninety minutes, one person dies while waiting for a donated organ. Whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in the Hispanic and African communities. Whereas more than six thousand units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California. At any given time, six thousand patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. Whereas each year, millions of lives are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissue, marrow, and blood. Whereas nearly twelve million Californians have signed up with Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wishes to be an organ and tissue donor are honored. Whereas a spirit of giving and decision to donate is not restricted by age or medical condition. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as DMV Donate Life California Month, and encourage all residents of Santa Ana to sign up with Donate Life California with the California Department of Motor Vehicles.
With that, I'm going to go ahead and proceed with the balance of the city council meeting, but as we do, I know we have to count some ballots, as it relates to one of the items on the assessment district. So what I'm going to do is, for a moment, even before we do the oath of office or anything else, just go to item seventy-five A, which is the Warner Avenue Assessment District. And what I want to do is, right now, say this is the time and place, fixed for the public hearing related to the proposed formulation of the assessment district, 2015-1, which is the Warner Industrial Community, and a proposed levy of assessments within such district for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of reconstruction of the streets within the Warner Industrial Community. And so I just want to ask the clerk, do we have any written communications on this matter?
We have some ballots that we need to count, but we have not received any communication. I would like to report for the record, though, that the notice of the public hearing and distribution of the assessment ballots have been completed in the manner and form as required by law.
And before proceeding any further with a public hearing, I would like to ask bond counsel to provide both the city council and the audience a summary of the proceedings that will take place, both during the public hearing and after the close of the public hearing. So I now would like to call upon bond counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Warren Diven. I'm a public finance partner with Best, Best &amp; Krieger, and we've been asked to assist the city in the proceedings to consider the formation of this assessment district. After I give my presentation, there'll be a brief staff report, and then the mayor will solicit testimony from any interested party who may be here and wants to give testimony either in favor of or in opposition to the proposed assessment district. At the conclusion of the public testimony, we've asked the mayor to let property owners know that if they have an assessment ballot that they haven't submitted yet, or if they want to withdraw an assessment ballot that they have submitted to change that ballot, they need to do so before the public hearing is closed. And we'll ask the mayor to ask the audience whether any such property owners are in the audience, and if so, we'll have a brief recess while the property owners make those changes. At the conclusion of any receipt of any additional assessment ballots, the public hearing will be closed, and this item will be recessed while, so the clerk of the council can tabulate the assessment ballots. At the conclusion of the tabulation of the assessment ballots, the clerk of the council will report the results of the tabulation to the city council. This is a majority protest proceeding in this respect, so that if the ballots received, and each ballot is weighted based upon the amount of the proposed assessment to be levied against a particular property, if the ballots received in support of the levy of the assessments outweigh the ballots submitted in opposition to the levy of the assessments, then there will be no majority protest, and the city council could move forward to form the assessment district. Alternatively, if the ballots received in opposition to the levy of the assessments outweigh the ballots in support of the levy, the city council will be precluded from moving any further toward, in the formation of the assessment district. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have at this point in time.
Thank you. Can you just be available? I would now like to ask our public works director to provide a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Could you bring the other mic down, please? Yeah. Or, no, no, just bring it down. Yeah.
We're requesting to proceed with the instruction as stated in the staff report, and go ahead and count the ballots.
Thank you. If you can be available for questions as well, thank you. And I would like to open up the public hearing, a portion of tonight's meeting, and note that I have two persons wishing to address us on item seventy-five A. One is Randy Berg, and another is Clarence Turner. So Randy, let's start with you, and then we'll go with Clarence, please.
Good evening, Mayor Polito and council members. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking Gail Fossler and Clarence Turner for their unwavering desire to make this thing happen in an environment where the public streets in the industrial areas are terrible. They're third world, and they create a tremendous devaluation in property values, as well as safety risks. Having said that, I stand before you tonight in great opposition to this assessment district, not because I don't believe that it's required and needed, because, like I said, the streets are in such despair, but I think it sets a terrible precedent. And I ask you whether this precedent, if you further, if you further look at what the potential is, will ultimately the business owners and the property owners be made to pay for other infrastructure, police or fire? At what point in time do the taxes that we pay warrant to have a sufficient infrastructure to run our businesses? I've been told at the outset of this that the council had very little interest in this matter, because the constituents, their voting constituents, were not the business owners, and that the streets and the allocation of those dollars to pay those streets were to be used for the people that voted. And I'd like to remind the council that these businesses in these areas wound up employing those constituents, and that the businesses have the choice to have their businesses located in this city. And without the proper infrastructure, I think you're going to find businesses that are going to reconsider basing our businesses in these areas. So again, I'm grateful for Gail Fossler and Clarence Turner's desire to fix this problem. I just think it's a terrible precedent that we set, and I'm concerned that if this passes, future assessments will be levied on businesses to provide basic support and infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Clarence, please. Thank you, Clarence, please.
Clarence Turner, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Needless to say, I'm an unabashed supporter of this program, and I too commend Gail Fossler for taking the bull by the horns, so to speak, to push this through. She tells a story about how one day she walked out of her office and looked at the streets and said, "She's got to do something about this." So she walked out, walked into the neighbor's office, thinking, "I'm either going to get hit over the head or going to get some support," so she got neither. But she did start that process and began to talk to city staff and so forth about how to fix this. And somewhere along the way, she got me to sign up along with her, this happened about three or four years ago. And since that time, we have been in touch with all of those property owners, some of them opposed, as Randy is, and many of them in support. So I came here tonight with two speeches, one to say, "I'm sorry it failed," the other to say, "I hope it succeeds," so I've got to wait for the city clerk to tally that up and so forth. But let me tell you this, regardless of how it works out, you have a wonderful city staff. You're very, very lucky that they are so dedicated, so helpful. City manager's office, finance, the public works, I mean, those people showed up sometimes off the clock. They answered a lot of our questions, and we did have a lot of questions. And they worked with us on the pro side, they worked with other people who were opposed to it to share the information, let them know what is going on and what it's all about. And it is a very, very complicated program. I suspect, I don't know, but I suspect that this is probably the one and only kind of JV program to address a situation like this that I have ever heard of, and I've been in public life, as some of you may know. I know also the property owners say in our area, "Well, you know, we pay our taxes and so forth, and therefore the city should do this, whatever." But the best, as I remember, only about 16, 17 cents out of every real property tax dollar comes to the city, and you've got a lot of things to serve. So yes, I'm in support of it, and yes, I do commend the city staff for helping us. We would not have gotten this far had it not been for their help. And I wouldn't worry about this being a precedent, because it's doubtful that you're going to find two more people out there who's going to work as hard as we did to get this far. Thank you.
Thank you, Clarence. Anybody else? With that, let me close the public hearing, but I think we need to maybe allow the clerk more time to continue to count the ballots. So should I recess and then come back, Madam Clerk?
Yes, please.
All right. So I'm going to recess for a moment. We'll leave that in abeyance and let them count the ballots, and when they're ready, we'll continue with that matter. That's why I wanted to open up with it. Now, what I would like to do is, I believe Gary Elwood is a nominee for the Transportation and E-TAC Committee, Environmental Transportation Advisory Committee. Do we have to vote him in first? Are you ready to swear him in? So come on down. Come on down, Gary, and we'll go ahead and minister the oath of office.
I think so.
Hello, how are you? Nice to see you. I have council member Tina Harrow here, who will be holding the Bible. He's the person that nominated you to the Environmental and Transportation Committee. If I can have you repeat after me.
Okay.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Gary Wood, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to direct our attention to the consent calendar and ask, are there any items? Councilman Martinez.
Of course, Mr. Mayor, and welcome me back.
Do you want to do that now or right afterwards? It appears later on the agenda.
So...
So let's wait for a moment.
Mr. Mayor, I actually would like to pull 13B, just because I want to take an opportunity to talk about this. Of course, I support Councilman Reyna as a person that he's nominating, but I do want to talk specifically about this. I want to pull this item about this commission.
13B?
13B. I also want to pull 19G and 25I.
19G and 25I?
Yes.
Any other items from council members? Councilman Reyna.
25A.
25A. Any other items? If not, I would entertain a motion on the... We have two speakers. Okay, which items? All right. Robert Tesklin and...
Good evening, Mayor Polito and Santa Ana city council members. My name is Ilya Tesklin. I want to discuss my first three minutes of the item destruction of absolute city records. And another three minutes, I want to discuss item 50A. And at the end, I want to have a three minutes for public comments.
Look, this is not something that's out of my prerogatives, so I can just ask you to combine all your comments within three minutes, please.
So what does it mean that instead of 10 minutes, I have to...
Yeah, you can't say, "I'm going to speak on 10 items and take 30 minutes." It doesn't work that way. If you want to do different items, we just ask you, please comment on them.
Okay, I don't want to argue with you, but I think that every person, by the amendment of Constitution, has a public free speech, and I want to have a three minutes.
You do, but you don't get three minutes on every item. We can limit the time. And I know you're just trying to get more time to speak longer, so why don't you go ahead and start? And if you want to talk more about the Constitution and everything else, don't argue with me. You can talk to the city attorney, and she'll explain it to you.
Okay, I want to ask city attorney, why, instead of 10 minutes...
All right, why don't we go on to your son, then? And can you talk to him a little bit? I'm just telling him that he can't pick three items and get nine minutes, or 10 items and get 30 minutes.
Right, you can limit public comment.
I can limit public comment to a reasonable amount of time.
I want to say that I don't want about public comments, nine minutes. I want three minutes about public comments, but I want two times for three minutes for item.
He wants like 19E, and he wants other items, just that he's selecting, and I just think he's abusing, you know, the privilege we give folks to speak.
Yeah, the Brown Act only requires that a member of the public be offered an opportunity to speak on an item before action is taken on it. Your agenda designates four minutes, with the exception of public hearings, where we do add additional time for the public hearing.
So let's give him four minutes right now and speak on everything you want to speak.
Okay, I'm still not clear. This is four minutes for items, or it's a four minutes for altogether? I just want to know clarification.
All right, go talk to her. Just walk over there in the side room, and she'll explain it to you in great detail. Meanwhile, Robert, do you want to come down and speak? And if not, I'll just go on to the next speaker.
About this item, I think it's connected to the current issue of my brother.
Oh, yeah, she's at the back of the room, the city attorney waiting for you.
You have an issue with...
I want to public speak.
No, no, she's back in the room. She'll explain it to you.
I want to the public, the public know, why I've forbidden to have a...
She already said it. She already said it. Go ahead, Robert.
Well, okay, but your issue that you're trying to destroy public records is very connected to this issue of concealing, the police concealing records with regard to certain records that they're concealing with regard to abuse of my brother. And I would urge you not to destroy any records. You have more than enough data. You can buy terabyte drives and so forth. You don't need to destroy records with regard to that item. And with regard to the case of my brother, where he's being obviously illegally confined without any reason, and for, well, of course, for the wonderful profit of the regional center and so forth, where he's free to be allegedly choked and abused and so forth, and I don't know what interest it would be for either the police department or any department to, you know, ignore over two years of reports of abuse. I mean, why would they think it's being ignored or made up or covered up? Because it's an issue of his life, you know? If you choke someone out for two minutes, he would be dead, and now he has seizures from the over-medication and so forth on that. Obviously, I agree that the judges have to be responsible for making sure that he's brought out of there, but certainly the police would be helpful if they didn't conceal records and certainly don't change the records, at least reflect at least what they investigated. That would be helpful to go before a judge and say, "Here, this client is being severely abused every day, choked and so forth, having seizures. They refuse to take him to the hospital and so forth." And that would be very helpful in order for you to... This is a massive crime against humanity, illegally confining him, putting him on toxic drugs that he's not supposed to be on in violation of his, you know, civil rights and constitutional rights and so forth. And therefore, I would see it would be in the interest of your, to spare the entire county from liability to save his life, first of all, and reunite him with his family, and second of all, to make sure that the police would help in collecting this data and presenting it to the court. And that would be helpful in order to save his life, most importantly, in addition to reuniting his family, resolving the issue. That would be my first priority in this case. Thank you.
All right, with that, let's go on to an item 13D, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just as I mentioned earlier, I'm supportive of the nomination, but I did want to speak briefly. It's been some time that the E-TAC Commission has actually met because of lack of quorum. And so I'm very happy that my colleagues have finally appointed some folks. But what I wanted to discuss, and I've been in communication with my commissioner, is that we all know that we're up here, transportation is a top priority for all of us, specifically for us as it pertains to the streetcar coming. And so when you look at the E-TAC Commission, we all know that most of the issues that they're addressing has to deal with trees. And when we look at transportation and some of the issues that we're facing at the federal level and at the state level, and what we're trying to do here regionally here and at the local level, is that I'm asking my colleagues to consider possibly bifurcating, you know, E-TAC and having its component and being environmental and dealing with its trees and possibly creating a mobility, either a different commission or some kind of task force. And so I would like to see if we could address this issue to come before the Transportation and Development Committee, because I think for us at this moment in time, with the lack of quorum that we have over the months, and it's been several months, and I'm not sure if our public works director, it's been two or three months that there's been a lack of quorum. And as we move forward in addressing the issues as it pertains to the streetcar, we have this advisory committee, most of the issues that they're dealing with is dealing with trees. And so as we move forward with our plan for transportation, and we have tons of infrastructure coming, whether it be for active transportation or for a streetcar, as we look at our safety mobility, it's in hundreds of millions of dollars. If you look at our capital improvement plan, sometimes the city council doesn't fully digest that plan because it's humongous and it's tied to the city budget. And so I'm wanting to make sure that we have a committee that is willing and able and a volunteer committee that wants to look at some of these issues that are important to us on the city council and the city. And so I just hope that we could have those discussions at the Transportation and Development Committee. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the item.
All right, so we'll move the item, and if the record could please note that request. Is there a second? There's a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposed motion carries unanimously. With that, item 19G.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be very quick. If I could please have staff, I did, I have inquired about the animal shelter services, and I sent an email last week to our city manager. And just wanting to make sure, as it pertains to this agreement, I know various cities are signing on into this agreement and really creating a... The county of Orange is going to be doing a new shelter in Tustin, and this is our opportunity to sign in an agreement. But at the same time, there's been other local municipalities that have chosen to put their services to other shelters. I understand in the report that our police department has done its due diligence as it pertains to looking to see who could accommodate the city of Santa Ana and its services. And unfortunately, there is no provider at this time that can actually help with the city of Santa Ana. I have concern, as we all know, and we receive many emails through various people about the conditions of the county's animal shelter and its reasons for now moving forward and really building a new one. My question to our staff is that how are we going to continue to assuring that the county continues to be in compliance, even though we can't go with anyone else, that we're keeping track of how we're actually monitoring if we continue to keep our animals within the county animal shelter?
Thank you, council member Martinez and the mayor and council staff. There's a number of changes. They are going to increase the quality and the level in the new facility, but also they're going to reestablish some committees, including city manager representation and quality control. So those provisions and the concerns that you're talking about are going to be part of this process.
And just lastly, just wanting to make sure that the process is equitable, is I'm looking at the cost of what we're going to have to pay in comparison to some other cities. And I understand that we're a big city with big needs, and so is the city of Anaheim. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're going to be paying, you know, a tune of several million dollars, that we are, you know, really holding the county accountable, because prior practices have not been good, and I just want to state that for the record. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I'll move the item.
Do we have a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 25A, Councilman Reyna is going to not speak to it because it's been pulled. So it's a good thing. Two good things. And now 25I.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. 25I is an item for discussion as it pertains to asset management. During our discussions of our five-year strategic plan and years prior, I have asked our city managers, prior to Mr. City Manager David Cabasols, and even actually inquired our city attorney, the city of Santa Ana does not have an asset manager. And as you all know, we have a tremendous amount of assets here in our city, and we really haven't had, you know, someone really monitoring those assets and assuring whether we decide to sell property, how we manage that property, how do we actually fix the infrastructure of those assets. You know, certainly our assets as it pertains to our public right-of-way, our roads and our streets, but it also goes beyond, you know, certain infrastructure and current properties that we own, and we should understand how we actually manage those. It's my understanding in this staff report that we're going out to, and we're going to have some kind of consultant. So I have a question, Mr. City Manager. Why did we choose to go to the route of a consultant versus hiring an asset manager?
I think we're talking about real estate? Which... Go ahead, Fred. Do you have an answer for that?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This consultant would come in and evaluate the state of the city in terms of his assets. It's not only real estate assets, also all the assets, infrastructure and everything, and also come up with a plan of how we can manage these assets. By doing that, we get a... By doing that, we get a hold of what we have and what it takes to manage these assets in an orderly fashion, so we need to find out the scope of what we're dealing with first in order for us to determine whether we have the expertise within the city to manage it, or we need to hire more people. So this is the need assessment and also implementation planning, and the next would be requiring to see what resources we need.
So I'm supportive, I've been asking for this for over five-plus years before your time, and of course, before our city manager's time, and the importance of asset management for any community, the amount of hundreds and millions of dollars of assets that we actually have, and, you know, not having someone specifically to manage those, and in particular, as it pertains to real estate, the city council has a fiduciary responsibility to assuring whatever properties we choose to sell, that we make sure that there is a public good, a public benefit behind that, and in recent, we've seen articles of the Voice of OC or others come before us, and I wanted to thank our staff and thank you, Mr. Public Works Director, as you articulated in making sure that as we put these assets together and how we move forward, whether it be real estate or whether it be with infrastructure, how can we assure that the process is going to be transparent and it's going to be equitable? Because I think some of the questions that have come before us is that many members of our community have asked, how can we do community gardens in some of our parcels? Or how can we partner with the city of Santa Ana and, you know, certain restrictions on certain properties, and we've only been able to share with them, this is what's available, not available, and really have not really, and I don't mean to be negative towards you or our staff, but we haven't been as transparent because we haven't had a full-fledged process, and I'm glad that we're now going through this, but I'm wanting to make sure that there is participation by the public and in making sure that when this plan is completed, that we are able to share that with the public, and it is also my hope that my colleagues will see that there is a need for an asset manager here in the city of Santa Ana to manage those assets, certainly the role of our Public Works Director, he has a lot, he's already doing a lot, you look at our Finance Director and some of his responsibilities, and he's having to do a lot himself within his department, and the importance of having an asset manager, whether it's dealing with our real estate or infrastructure, we need to make sure that we're able to partner with both departments, because ultimately, we as a city council should also be making decisions as it pertains how we want to sell those properties, how we want to utilize those properties, and so I'll be supportive, but I'm hoping that, and I don't know what the timeframe is, six months to a year to complete this, that this will come back to the city council for its review and approval and what the next steps are.
Yeah, just to make a clarification, Councilmember, you're absolutely correct, we're separating the sales of properties from this asset management, sales of properties would go through a different process and it would be transparent, this is mainly about what kind of asset in terms of infrastructure, the streets, the fleet, we have, what's the age, how long does it take, what would be the maintenance cost, and how we can manage maintaining all this asset in an optimum way, so that's a concentration of this staff report, we're separating the sales of properties.
Yeah, but it's my hope that after this is done, we'll be able to marry the two because they're really, they're connected, right, when you're looking at asset management, you know, there is no difference between, you know, our real estate holdings versus our other assets as it pertains to our infrastructure as well, and so I'm just wanting to make sure that when this is done, that we could actually connect the dots to assuring that we are being transparent and open in how we actually deal with real estate or how we invest in our infrastructure. And with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I move the item.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any comment? Not, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So now, Madam Clerk, I think I still have the balance of the consent calendar, I would entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
So, move.
Those, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So now, let's go on to, Madam Clerk, would it be item 50A? Do we have any speakers on that item? Jason Lilly, I believe it is, please come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Jason Lilly, I am actually on the selected list of the 20 that were, the ones that were selected in the lottery, and I'm also one of the four that have not applied for a regulatory safety permit, and as I read over the amendments that you're making to Measure BB and saw the goal of the city, I wanted to explain to you why we haven't submitted our regulatory safety permit, and it's very simple, it actually has nothing to do with Measure BB or with the lottery process, but with the application itself. Nowhere in Measure BB is this mentioned, nor was it mentioned anywhere during the informative meetings that I personally attended, all three meetings leading up to the lottery, that says that if you are selected in order to apply, if your building or unit is part of an association, that you have to have a letter of approval from the head of that association in order to apply for a regulatory safety permit. And in our case, we're in a five-unit building, we own two units, someone else owns the other, two other units, they're the head of the association, and they have clearly, directly told us, written and verbally, we will not sign off to let you open, or I personally, this gentleman, will not let you sign off to open, I will sell you my buildings, which have a value of 3.5 million for both buildings or both units, he'll sell them to us for $5 million. So he is essentially extorting us for $1.5 million in order to be able to open, because of this clause that again, is nowhere in Measure BB, is nowhere in the lottery process, it's just something that was added to the application. So it's essentially letting the voice of one person silence the voices of the voters when they pass Measure BB. So if you're looking for the tax revenue for all 20 of these to open, I implore you to review and to remove this simple line that's in the application that doesn't require an amendment to do it, because we're partners with a national cancer charity, and we've done everything by the letter of the law in order to open, and we're stopped from being open from this one simple thing, this one simple requirement, and it's, according to your tax projections, a single dispensary will gross $1.5 million in the first year. So we can simply not afford, or our patients afford, to pay $1.5 million just for us to be able to open our doors, it's ridiculous. So we've talked about this with different people in the city, and I don't know what we need to do to move forward, I appreciate the amendments and the changes that you're making to Measure BB, but the bottom line is, it's not helping the core issue that's preventing some of these dispensaries from opening up.
Before you walk away, I want the city attorney to maybe make a comment here.
So, Mayor and Councilmembers, just that we can address that issue that the Speaker has raised, the reason that the city required, and the ordinance actually allowed the city staff to adopt administrative policies to implement the law, the reason that requirement was added is because even though the city might permit a use, we were coming across uses where the associations, the CCNRs, might prohibit the use, so all that we wanted to do by requiring that in the application is to make sure that we don't go ahead and approve someone's use, only to find that we're now in the middle of a battle between two private people. The association rules or the CCNRs have nothing to do with the city, if a person chooses to purchase a piece of property with covenants and restrictions, that's between them and the entity that created those restrictions, so the city cannot override them, just because the city permits the use, we cannot override the prohibition, so that was the reason for it, and that's why we have used it, and it has helped us so that we don't get into a battle, because maybe one property owner wants to have a dispensary, but the entire association that governs that property says they don't, and that's between them, it's a private matter.
And in our case, that wasn't the case, there was nothing in our CCNRs that prevented it whatsoever, but it's not, the amendment does not say, be sure that you're in compliance with your CCNRs, it says you have to have a letter of approval from the head of the association specifically, and that's where it got in the way, and we've spoken with Attorney Carvalho about this, and as far as the CCNR issue, I mean, you know, you can't put in a CCNR that you're not going to rent to minorities or anything like that, there's certain things that if it's in a certain area, if it's been deemed by the city, then the bottom line is that you're allowed to be able to open. I mean, this is something that was zoned properly, there was obviously lots of different zoning requirements, if you look at overall in the city of Santa Ana, very small areas were required for this, we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, we have patients, we're doing a completely different business model focusing on cancer patients, and they have nowhere to get their medicine. And so I implore you to somehow, again, it doesn't need to be amended, it just needs to be changed here, that's the bottom line, we did everything in compliance with CCNR, with Measure BB, with the lottery, we've done everything from the beginning, and we've been fighting this for the last year.
Again, and it really is a policy issue, you know, among staff as implemented that and up to the city council as to how you want to do it, the intent behind it was to make sure that we weren't approving a use knowing there was some type of association, and that the association would come back and argue that that use was not permitted.
And look, there might be a couple of questions up here, one I have is, when we did the lottery, that was a moment in time where we still didn't have all the administrative rules in place, so, you know, and I see the city attorney nodding yes, so the fact that you went through the process, you won a lottery, subsequent to that, some of these rules, you know, began to be developed, and I would argue that maybe we don't have it all, you know, such that it's working, you know, correctly yet, however, in this case, it seems to be, you know, between one private party and another, and I'm not sure, you know, how we resolve it other than continue to try to work it through, because you have a very legitimate point that you're making. Let me call on Mayor Protem for a moment, please.
Well, you can go ahead and sit down, and we appreciate your comments, I'm not sure if there's anybody else, Mr. Mayor, that requested, no, I mean, of the public.
No, no, from the public, you know, Jason was our only request, person requesting to speak.
Well, I'll go ahead and concede my time to Councilwoman Martinez, and then we can come back to me afterwards.
Thank you, Mayor Protempalio and Mayor Polito, as you all know, I was one of the two that was in opposition of this ballot initiative when it first came, and for reasons of enforcement and really not being sure that we were ready to address this issue knowing that we have a lot of illegal dispensaries, and it's really difficult to allow the, currently the five or so legal dispensaries now, it's very difficult for them to do business in this kind of climate, and so I want to thank our staff and our city attorney, our chief of police, and others that have worked in bringing this before us to make amendments, to making sure that this process becomes more fluid as we learn, as we're now in this industry. I'm a person that really has always focused on equity and making sure that our policies are equitable. I believe it's important as we move forward in this city that we look at policies that are equitable, and when I talk about equity, I'm wanting to focus on three things, I'm wanting to make sure that, you know, that the process was equitable, that we were able to have, based on these amendments, that we were able to have these folks, the four or five that now have applications, have been at the table, to be supportive of some of these amendments, as they've been, some of them started, I think, in April, I think the first one, and I'm not sure Chief Rojas when the first one came on board, I think it was sometime July, and so I think it's imperative that we bring all those stakeholders as we're making these, some of these amendments and changes, and so I'm wanting to make sure that that process was equitable. Based on the staff report, it says city staff will be organizing a meeting with permitted medical marijuana collectives to learn about their experiences with the implementation of the measure, potential process improvements, and their desire to modify the ordinance. A report on the proposed changes will be provided to the Public Safety and Neighborhood Improvement Council Committee and City Council, but we are here for a first reading, so I want to know how, and I'm not, would know what staff member could answer this, how is that process equitable?
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez and the mayor, this item of the most importance was related to firearms, and we wanted to make sure that we dealt with that, there was some strong encouragement to do that, one of the dispensary owners, actually the first one, was shot several times, and so we're worried that if we don't do something, that time is of the essence, so all we're doing in that case is following the state law. The other one related to giving some kind of time certain to people to make an application or not an application, and then there was also an issue related to a registered drug user for new applications, so we present that to you today for action, but we also understand there are other issues that we're getting emails, to your point, and we want to meet with those folks and those business owners, and then come back to the city council to deal with some of the things you're talking about.
And I thank you, Mr. City Manager, for, you know, for you and your staff for being proactive, but again, wanting to assure that my colleagues that the process is equitable, and it's not come here and then go back and talk to them, and I think this is a right step in the right direction, but what we don't want is folks saying, you know, the city council and the city, based on city staff's recommendations, are making this decision without really making sure that these folks get to participate, good, bad, or indifferent, and then as well, what are the impacts, right, to this process, and what kind of outcomes are we looking at, right? So when I talk about equity, it's the process, the impacts and the outcomes, and so I'm wanting to make sure that all three of those things are equitable, and so when I'm looking at the impacts, Mr. City Manager, and you're in particular discussing two items, one is the making sure that the guards, and I know, and I asked our chief of police and our city attorney on this issue, that we're not mandating, we're just following state law, that if they so wish, they can have armed guards. I get that, I understand that, I'm just wanting to reiterate that it's important for us to say that publicly, because we all know that marijuana is a Schedule I at the federal level, and even though the President of the United States has said, you know, we're not going to touch this issue, we're not going to address this issue, he's talked to law enforcement, whether it be DA on and so forth, but there hasn't been any policies at the federal level saying that it's legal, right now, it is illegal to sell marijuana at the federal level, because it's a Schedule I, so I'm wanting us to make sure that whether it's state law or not, that there's a fine line, and I just wanted us to be very clear of that. The next thing I'm wanting to make sure is based on the RSP, is assuring, I know, and I'm wanting to make sure, and I'm going to ask our city attorney maybe to answer this, is making sure that if we do move forward, that, you know, that, I'm wanting to make sure, based on the prior applicant, is that going to be restrictive, or is this going to be moving forward prospectively on the six months of the occupancy permit? So here we have, it says, so we have a six-month period to obtain certificate of occupancy from the date of application for the RSP. Can it be applied respectively, so that towards the prior applicant, or is it going to be applied prospectively?
We are only making sure that this is not unfairly applied to anyone who is already in the process, and this will only apply to those that have not yet applied for their permit, that are not actively engaged in the process, which I think is just a handful that we have at this point, we've issued 10, we have six that are in the process, and four that are not, so it would only apply to those who have...
So, and I only ask that because what are going to be the outcomes of this amendment to those applicants or possibly new applicants based on those, and there's discussion here, and possibly my other colleagues will discuss this, is the issue of, you know, having a six-month period of folks who have already been in the pipeline, have not been able to establish, you know, whatever, you know, their business, and they're still in the pipeline, and then moving forward, whether we, I'm not sure what this council decides, but I'm wanting to make sure that the process is equitable as it pertains to the impact and the outcome, again, because, you know, we have four or five of these applicants that have not been able to fulfill their obligation based on, you know, our prior administrative, and again, I'm not fully, and I'll be the first to admit, you know, I'm not, I have not paid a lot of attention to this issue, I have not contacted staff about this issue, because from the very beginning, I was in opposition, but when it comes to making amendments and changes to ordinance and policy and law, I'm going to be the first to speak up, right, and so that's why I'm speaking up, but I'm not an expert on this subject issue, but I'm wanting to make sure that our staff is making sure that these folks that are already in the pipeline and that are already doing business, that they're part of the process, right, because at the end of the day, they're legal businesses, whether certain residents supported it or council members vice versa, it doesn't really matter, it's law here to permit these folks, but wanting to make sure that they do participate in... in this process to assuring that whatever changes we make administratively or here on this dais, that they're at the table.
And really the impetus behind this particular requirement was we actually do want to be equitable and fair to everyone. And what we don't want to have happen is someone who has obtained one of these lottery positions to just sit on that position. And so we have a couple of those that have done nothing. We had an explanation from one, but we just wanted to make sure that we're telling people, if you have one of those spots, you need to come forward, you need to apply and you need to diligently go through the process. Now, obviously, if we're in the middle of a process and it exceeds six months because of something that we've done, we would never, obviously, make someone ineligible after they've paid the application fee and they're doing everything within their control. So this section is actually meant to be more equitable so that more people can get involved in the process.
Thank you. And I may have some more comments if my other colleagues speak on this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protemp.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think you've said it all almost. Councilwoman Masqua.
Hi, yes, Sonia, as far as applicants who find themselves in the same position where they're having issues getting that, obtaining a certificate of occupancy, what are their options since it's kind of a private entity not giving them that certificate? It's not the city. What is, what would his options be?
Well, the city does issue the, well, okay, so you're talking about one of the pre-rerequirements. You're talking about someone who, for example, cannot satisfy that condition that we have in the administrative condition.
Right.
In my opinion, if you are part of a homeowners association or a business association that is not allowing you to use your property, they're in violation of their own covenants, of their own CCNRs, and there are legal remedies available to them. It would be my opinion that if you are an owner of a property and there is this requirement and all that person who's the head of the association is required to do is to sign off on something, that's a ministerial duty and they should do it. And if they're failing to do that and they're causing someone to lose, then there is absolutely a legal remedy that that individual has.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else? Councilmember Ben Odeas?
Thank you, Mayor Protemp. A couple of comments here. We did have an item, an update from staff at the Public Safety and Neighborhood Improvement Committee with regard to Measure BB. We did have a number of members of the public, business owners, address the Public Safety Committee. Some of the items that are on tonight's agenda for council consideration came as a result of some of the requests, the considerations that were presented before staff and before the committee and to staff. So the main thing that I want to really point to here is, I too was not one that was in favor or supported the measure, the steps that the city, of the city taking steps to legalize the dispensaries, primarily because there was, we were facing a problem with regulating all of the illegal dispensaries that were out there in the enforcement. We were being overwhelmed by those illegal dispensaries and they were causing a lot of problems that were spilling over into neighboring businesses and neighborhoods and schools and such. The council moved forward, the will of the people was such that Measure BB was approved and now we do have dispensaries, medical marijuana dispensaries that are legal within our city. And what I've found and I've observed is that there being, our city, our staff has been very intentional about regulating them, regulating them well. I've noticed a number of them driving from one place to another and frankly, I've been pleasantly surprised by seeing the level of professionalism and the way, at least from the exterior, from what I've been able to see, the way that they've managed their presentation, they've actually improved. A few of them have kind of actually improved some of the aesthetics and the appearance of safety and all and their surrounding area, the block, their industrial area where they are. So it seems like they're bringing a certain amount of benefit, actually, in addition to the aesthetics and such and safety, also revenue to the city. So at this point now, we have legitimate business in town. What I would just ask for, we have since received some correspondence from at least a couple of the legal operators requesting that we look at several other items, at least one or two, one of them that we're considering tonight, but several other items. So what I would just ask staff is to engage in that conversation with some of the operators of these new businesses in town and to consider some of their requests. One of the things that they've mentioned is operating hours, looking at also things that we might want to consider that would benefit our community as a whole. One of the things I was mentioning, one of my colleagues, and actually that came up at the Public Safety Committee, we have a number of these, some that want to be able to stay open a little bit later, but, and we have also some concerns that have been expressed with regard to these large billboards throughout town along the freeways. So in some cases, maybe there, we might look at where there might be some, some median mines and some concessions on both sides where we can make sure that the community is protected from just the, either the advertising or other concerns or things that are presented to us and that these businesses are also allowed to be able to function, operate in a way that's beneficial to them, that also brings revenue to the city and ultimately makes our community safer overall. So that's my primary point there with regard to the items here on the agenda. I don't know of any other members, I'll leave it open for others to speak and address anything before any action.
Thank you, Councilmember. And seeing no other comments, I'll go ahead and call on myself. I think the mayor had to step out. Let me just go back and give some history on this, I think, just because it's been a while. It's been about a year and a half, maybe a couple of years that this has been before us. And as you all know, there was a vote that was taken by the people and in this city and they adopted and approved Measure BB by about 60, 65% approval. So we're just exercising the people's will here and enforcing that. And I believe that prior to that, there was a moratorium that was in effect. And during that moratorium, I believe it was during the eight years that many of us were here, maybe seven years, there had been single digits or a single number of unpermitted operators. And during that period of time, during the moratorium, we had over 150. So obviously, the moratorium wasn't working and that's why I think, you know, the petition campaign started by residents in town and obviously it was adopted. I want to thank the staff and I want to thank our chief, who I guess stepped out right now because of his hard work. My understanding is that the number of unpermitted operators in town is below 20. So that's pretty significant to come down about 130 or so unpermitted operators. And as a council member noted, we saw them proliferating not only near parks, but near schools and near homes. And it was becoming a very unfortunate set of conditions here in town. And I think where we're going now is a much more positive direction. Again, I think that, you know, we're enforcing the will of the people. We have to understand this industry. We have to understand this, whether we like it or not, it is law. And so for all of us to inform ourselves, educate ourselves, we have to know that just as much as we, we may not have had any background in land use, we may not have had any background in transportation or development or public safety, but because we're exercising now the will of the people, we have to understand these industries that are emerging and that are becoming part of our community. And so I, you know, I learned this from a good friend of mine who's the former president of the House of Representatives in Colorado. He said, "Look, I had never heard or done any of this or known about marijuana in college", but he had to learn it real quick because his state was heading down that path and we're down that path. So for those of us who don't know it, we need to learn it. We can't bury our head in the sand because it's something that's coming. And as many of you may know, there's also a referendum on this year's ballot in the state and it's to legalize adult recreational use. And it's polling at about 60, 65%. What does that mean? That more than likely it's going to be adopted and it's going to be passed. So Madam City Attorney, if I'm not mistaken, with the help of the city clerk, I understand that under Section 21-128 of Measure BB, we can come back and make amendments to the ordinance that was adopted to adjust for certain things that may be housekeeping measures, maybe some adjustments and alterations that we may see fit. And I think, and I want to thank the Chair of the Public Safety Committee for having the foresight to look at those and, you know, one of those being the opportunity, not the mandate, to obligate security staff at the dispensaries to carry, you know, a weapon or a gun. That doesn't mean we're obligating them, that just gives the operator the option to do that. And I think because of what was stated before, I think it's sound. Secondly, I think Mr. Lilly makes compelling arguments because he's one of the four of the 20 that are, you know, were selected through the lottery process. I think he's trying to exercise his right to open. Unfortunately, there appears to be a problem with, you know, the site where he's at. But I think unlike Mr. Lilly, there may be others that are just sitting on their rights and that's something in the law that you can't do either. And one of the problems I had with Measure BB, when I looked at it just from a legal perspective, is that there was no deadline for folks to be able to file by and complete their RSP and to have their background checks done and to comply with the process. So, you know, we can't open or keep this process open indefinitely. That just doesn't work. It doesn't work for you, Mr. Lilly, it doesn't work for any of the others. It certainly doesn't work for the city because the way we enforce the law and the way we enforce keeping that number of unpermitted uses down to a manageable level is because of the assessments and the revenues we generate from these, from these operators, from these legal operators. So I'm wholehearted, I'm completely in support of the recommendations. One of the things I think that we might want to reconsider is, from what my reading is of the recommendation, the second recommendation, is to keep the process open for an additional six months for those who haven't exercised their rights, that are part of the initial 20 that were selected in the lottery process. We've had the process open for 14 months. I'm not saying, you know, Mr. Lilly doesn't have a good reason for not having opened yet, but they're, not everybody's in the same situation you are. And, you know, folks may have purchased a parcel of property where they believed they were going to be able to open a collective at, but maybe they lost their option, maybe they lost their rights, maybe something happened. But again, I think we have to go through and cleanse that list and maybe cleanse the waitlist as well and make sure that maybe some folks have just said, "Look, I'm not going to wait, I'm going to go open up someplace else or I'm going to go do something else." So I think that's something that we need to do. We can't just keep these things open forever. I would just comment, Mr. City Manager, was the additional six months, was that a figure, you know, you know, I guess I'm trying to figure out, is that more just an arbitrary number or was there, you know, some thought from staff to say, "Let's give folks an additional half year if, since we've already given them 14 months to open"? I just think, you know, within 14 months, you should be able to figure out, have your background checked, have your property, have everything done. So I'm just wondering why we're going further out.
I think one of the reasons we went further is when staff was talking about this, we were trying to make sure that we weren't being unfair to anyone because our original regulations did not identify any timeline, there was no time restriction. So I think that was, that was the reason why, is that we didn't identify a time restriction. So we felt like the ones that were in the system, we'd establish that, we'd establish a rule of six months and then at least for the ones that had not yet moved forward, that we would give them six more months. I think that's why, that was the thought process.
Okay. I get that. Like I said, I just think that, look, you all, I think staff has been more than open, more than helpful, more than supportive. It sounds like Mr. Lilly even had a chance to meet with you, Madam City Attorney. And so I think our staff has really tried to make this process work. I just feel unfortunate that, you know, feel that, you know, we should have these 20 up and running because we want to use those resources from the revenues generated to be able to close those few that are remaining open, those unpermitted uses. So what, you know...
Mayor Protemp.
Yes.
If it's the council's desire, I conferred with the city attorney and if six months seems to be unduly favorable, maybe we can do 120 days or four months if you want to make that change from the dais.
You know, I think that's a little bit more reasonable because that's plenty of time to be able to, you know, again, having over a year plus an additional four months, that's just plenty of time, that's a year and a half. So I'm not sure if my colleagues believe, I'd like to make that amendment to, a friendly amendment to the recommended action. The last item is the prohibition on folks who have the narcotic registrants. I'm okay with that. I just think, what if there are folks that are, that are operating or eligible to operate because they're lottery winners and they've been operating illegally? So that's my understanding is that some folks who've been operating illegally, but yet they've, you know, they just haven't opened up their legal operation, you know, should we reward those folks? Something to think about, maybe that's something we revisit, but it's, you know, it doesn't seem right that those who could have operated legally but continued operating illegally is not fair as well. And when we're talking about equity, that's something important. Finally, the only thing I would suggest to my colleagues is, there are so many questions around this industry that, you know, we can stay here all night and talk about. I think we need a work study on this because exactly what the council member was talking about, signage, hours of operation, talking about, you know, inventory and quality control and potential cultivation and all the other ancillary sub-industries that support an industry like this is important for us to discuss. As we go through our economic development strategic plan, this has to be something that has to be mentioned in here. So I hope that staff does include this as an emerging industry, just like real estate, just like car sales, just like other, you know, other industries. This is one that I think we have to look at as well. And we're not talking about additional dispensaries, we're talking about, again, manufacturing, we're talking about things that support the industry, you know, whether it's legal or technical help, whether it's accounting, whether it's, you know, banking or financing when that does come into play. But those things, you know, you know, the pharmaceutical and the testing side of it, all those things we need to understand. We're now in the age where this is upon us and we can no longer claim ignorance. We have to be able to say, "Look, let's learn it, let's understand it and let's see if maybe it's a benefit to the city." These are jobs, these are opportunities, these are future revenues and if we manage it well, the city could really be a hub of, you know, where a lot of the discussion is for the rest of the state. And I think that's something that we should, we should consider. So I would make that additional amendment, that we bring this back, or maybe we don't need to do an amendment. We just say, "Let's do a work study for the future on some of the things that were talked about in public safety."
We'll follow that direction.
So with that, I'll move the item with that friendly amendment to reduce the six months to 120 days. And if there are any additional questions...
Mr. Mayor Protemp.
I'll second that item. If I cannot just make a brief comment, that I would agree that the, some of the comments Mayor Protemp mentioned with regard to, as we look forward to any future amendments, whenever there, we can identify, something for us to look at specifically for City Manager, City Attorney, but if we can find a nexus between an illegal operating dispensary that some, that operator that then submits an application to operate legally and/or maybe is doing both at the same time. I think we need to create, at this point, I don't think that we actually have, and I think intentionally, we didn't add any type of caveat that would eliminate somebody or disqualify somebody from the process, but it's something that I think we should begin to consider as we, as we go forward with other potential applicants or other individuals that we might bring into the consideration if some drop off. So it's just a comment.
And I'd just like to add that is actually something that was, like, I don't think we had a large policy discussion on it, but it certainly was something that we in the city attorney's office had thought about because at the time, the concern was, you know, are we going to reward people for operating illegal? I think at the time we developed the ordinance, it probably wasn't fair because we're starting the new process, but I think now that we do have a solid process moving forward, that we should consider that so that we at least put their legal permit at jeopardy if they're going to violate our laws. I mean, they need to choose whether they want to follow the legal path or the illegal path. And we do have a few of those in our system right now.
I agree. Excellent comment. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor Protemp. Ms. Madam City Attorney, I have a quick question for you. If, if my colleagues decide to go with the first reading here tonight and based on, you know, some of the emails that we received from some of the operators that would like to add some additional things that we would like to change, would we be able to do that in the second reading?
No, you cannot. After the first reading, this has to stay, but if you wanted any subsequent changes, you could... changes, you could start that process all over again.
And again, I am supportive of what, you know, the Mayor Protem has said and even, you know, Councilmember Benavides, but for me to be supportive, I've talked about, you know, making sure that there's equity in these policies and these amendments and, you know, going after the fact to these applicants. And yes, I know that we had certain applicants and others, community, go to the public safety, but did we reach out to all stakeholders? Did we do our due diligence? And based on conversations or emails that I've seen, that process wasn't equitable. And so, I can not support, you know, going for a first reading, knowing that we didn't have full participation from all the operators. And maybe there may not be any changes, there may be additions later, but just for the mere fact that I think we should have done our job and reached out and making sure that they were able to provide their perspective. And again, as we move forward, it's just not in this policy, but in all policies that, as we move forward with the city, that it's important that we talk about the sunshine ordinance, we talk about transparency, and I want to thank my colleagues because I think they're committed to all of that. But we need to make sure that any amendment, in particular, something like this that's so sensitive, and I agree with Mayor Protem Sarmiento, that this is an industry that can be very meaningful if, you know, for the city of Santa Ana as it pertains to various different industries, whether it be manufacturing or not. But again, wanting to make sure that the process is equitable and that all stakeholders are able to participate. And so, I'm not sure, Mayor Protem, if you all want to move forward, you have a first and a second and take that risk, or do you want to just possibly continue this and make sure that we go out to the rest of the stakeholders and have some more conversation based on the emails that we receive so that we can do this all at once and not having to come back again?
Well, thank you for those comments. And the only way I would respond is that there's been some due diligence done by the committee. The committee has had public members go and speak before it. They've, staff has also met with, from what I understand, folks who were licensed operators. And also, look, we can't always wait for staff, and I would compel my colleagues to do this, to go out and do, you know, town halls for everything. Go out and speak to these folks. They're business owners. They're people who are legitimately part now of our stakeholder community, and it's upon us to go out there. And I have met with some of these folks and I have visited some of these sites, and they're in my ward, they're in council, other council members' wards. This is something like you go and visit an auto dealer or going to Main Place Mall and going, talking to a business owner and saying, "How are things going for you?" And that's a way we canvass as well. And that's due diligence, and that's participation, and that's doing that, you know, that exchange of ideas. And so, what I would suggest, Councilmembers, that these are first steps, so it doesn't mean that you should feel locked into this. It's not like we're never going to review this again. If anything, I think that we're going to review this more than likely relatively soon because we need to have a work study for the additional housekeeping and adjustments that you're talking about. But this isn't an exhaustive, final decision that we're making. It's first steps to be able to address some of the immediate needs, and then let's come back and make some of the adjustments that you're talking about. I'd love to host a town hall with you, with some of these owners and operators and have them come and speak before us, and we can adjust it further. So, I would say, if you would like, let's take these first steps and then let's come back and let's revisit it again, and that's, that would be my suggestion on this.
So, again, I'm just wanting to make sure, and it's not that I'm not supportive of these amendments, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, it's just that as, as we discuss, and I want to applaud our City Manager and our staff as it pertains to our city budget cycle and process, we've been extremely transparent. We've welcomed various stakeholders, whether it be the business or, and it going to various committees. The rationale is this, is that sometimes things need to be documented, and I know certain folks went to the Public Safety Committee and made point, but I have received emails and also phone calls and saying, "Look, we want to submit white papers, we want to submit other suggestions." And so, I understand that these are just first phases, but I just want to be clear that as we move forward as government, that we make sure that we document this process, that we talk, that we document, that we communicate it with all stakeholders. Because what we don't want is that receiving emails saying, "We want to add additional, we want to talk about hours of operation, we want to do A, B, and C." We want to talk about, we've received hundreds and thousands of emails as it pertains to the billboards, right? And that's another discussion that needs to be had, but it has to be one that's transparent, that it's open, that it's equitable, and that we're able to communicate this with our operators, that we're able to have a process within government so that we understand what that process is and that it's fair. And I'm not saying what we did wasn't fair, but I'm just wanting to assure that as we move forward, that we will continue, continue to push this transparent, open process with all operators and even stakeholders, like our residents who have concerns over the billboards. And look, I would love to have a town hall meeting with you, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, and our Chair of our Public Safety to talk about the billboards with our operators and some of the issues that we're facing, because I'll tell you that there's some residents saying, "Look, we continue to send you emails and no one's responding. Maybe one or two of you are responding or not." And again, we have to do our job, and I agree with you that we can go out there and visit, but we need to make sure that there's a process in place so that when we're moving forward with any kind of amendments or ordinances, we have documentation behind it saying that, "Look, we met with all stakeholders, all four or five operators, whatever it may be. We met with community leaders, we met with business leaders, on and so forth, so that we understand that when this moves forward, that we don't get emails or phone calls saying, 'You know what? You never, you know, brought me to the table.'" I always say that if you're not, if you're not going to be at the table, you're going to be on the menu, right? And I want, and I'm assuming that these operators want to be at the table, right? Because they have investments within the city. And so, I could go on and on, and I don't want to. So, I'm going to support, you know, your guys' recommendation, but just making sure that we have this study session in 90 days and that we also make an effort to do this town hall. And number three, that we continue to meet with these operators so that we can get, you know, information from all of them and not just maybe one or two.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any further comments from?
No.
The DIA's. If not, I'll call for the question, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to...
Can we clarify? Maria, who was the motion and who made the second?
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Sarmiento and seconded by Councilmember Benavides.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I don't know if we should have done a roll call on that one, but I think we're, we just want to note, got it, unanimous. Moving on to 55A, which is...
You got another person to be sworn in?
Let's do that. Let's do that first. Councilmember Reyna, the floor is yours.
Can I please have Isis Calvario up to the front? She will be sworn in as the new member of the Environmental and Transportation Advisory Committee. She has just been nominated by the City Council.
Does it matter? We would never pass a... transparency. This is... Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of invasion, that I will well and fully discharge the duties which I am bound to enter.
Thank you for that sworn-in ceremony. What I'm going to do right now is go back to the Warner Improvement District discussion that we had earlier. The City Manager just informed me that we have good news and that it passed by, with a 70% folks in favor. So, what I'd like to do is just take a moment and thank Clarence and Gail because I don't know when it was, Clarence, may you recall, but some time back, I went out there, we visited. You were, two years ago, you were kind of frustrated and working real hard, and fortunately, you know, we got, you know, staff involved and kind of tried to put an agenda onto it, and it's taken two years. And frankly, I do hope other parts of the city follow your lead. I think it's okay for businesses to help, you know, with some of the improvements. And at the end of the day, if you could just come to the podium for a moment, it's not that much money per business that you're going to pay. What is it on an annual basis, Clarence, or, go ahead?
It depends on the amount of the assessment, but it's compared to the values of the properties, it's almost peanuts, frankly.
It's almost peanuts, but it, but they're very important peanuts because it makes the whole area more valuable.
Exactly. I mean, those peanuts are very, very important because as an old-time real estate guy, 51 years in that business, I can tell you...
Speak a little louder, please.
I can tell you that when you're out looking at property, one of the first things that you see, even in industrial real estate, is the approach and what the neighborhood looks like. The streets tell the story, and I'm delighted to know that the streets are soon going to be improved over there. And on top of that, the bonus for all the property owners in the area is that the city's going to be replacing these sewers and the water lines and so forth going in there. And I think they're also addressing some of the high-tech communication systems as well. I'm not sure about that. But anyway, it's a great program. Thank you.
Can you do me just one personal favor?
Sure.
Because I don't see Gail here right now, is she?
No, she's not here.
She's, look, just get back to Gail, thank her, because this has been a labor of love.
Yes, it was.
You guys have gone door-to-door, above and beyond the call of duty, and part of the reason this began was Mayor Viragosa sits on some board with Gail.
Correct.
And he called Gail and, or they spoke and they said, "Well, I know the mayor." And so, look, I just want to point this out because we all do a ton of meetings. We do a lot of work, and sometimes nothing comes of those meetings.
That's correct.
And this particular meeting, I recall, and, you know, thanks, thank you to staff and everybody else because this is a big deal. Lot of streets are going to be redone, businesses are going to help pay for it. I do hope that others can emulate what you've done because you've done a good thing here. And now, it's passing with a 70% vote. That's a strong vote. Congratulations.
You don't win many 70% votes, trust me.
Congratulations. So, with that, Madam City Clerk, I just want to make sure we address everything here correctly. Do you want to report on the 70% vote?
Yes, I'd like to report that 205 assessment ballots were mailed to property owners in the assessment district, of which 138 were received back. So, that's a very good return. With 95 ballots supporting the assessment, the value is $1.5 million, and 43 ballots expressed opposition to the, to the assessment. So, with that, the assessment outweighs the ballot, the assessment ballots in support of the levy of assessment outweigh the assessment ballots in opposition to the levy of assessments. Therefore, there's no majority protest. You can now approve the resolution before you.
I would consider a motion and approving the resolution.
So moved, Mr. Mayor, it's a second.
We have a motion and a second, two seconds, actually.
Mayor, may I ask, since the formal, this is a formal, a very formal process, that we do the first and second and then just do a roll call vote? I'm sorry, but it is a...
All right.
...that we recorded.
So, it's in Mayor Protem's ward, so we'll let him do the second. No, I'm kidding, he can make, let him make the motion.
I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor.
And Martinez second the motion.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tina Harrell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sarmiento?
Aye.
Mayor Polito?
Aye.
Councilmember Benavides?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyna?
He stepped out.
Councilmember Amescla?
Aye.
We have a 6-0...
Thank you. Congratulations, Clarence, to you and all the folks out there. We look forward to seeing those streets redone and me going out there and cutting a ribbon or doing something special.
I'll be there.
Thank you. Thank you. So, with that, we go back to our next, where were we? Were we at?
55A.
55A?
Yeah.
I would, does anybody want to speak to this item? Councilmember Amescla?
I'll start. I just want to say that I'm very proud to be on a City Council that's bringing this resolution forward. It goes to show how the city of Santa Ana fosters a culture of inclusion, where we respect our diversity and understand that it's a strength in our community, and I'm very happy to be here and support, supporting this resolution tonight.
Thank you. Let me maybe make a comment and maybe a possible request of our colleagues, and that is that I would like to, you know, have the opportunity to include other causes. I'm talking about, you know, Cesar Chavez Day, for example, Martin Luther King Day, et cetera. This right now isn't worded with that, so I'm wondering, is there a committee we could send it to just to add some language?
Mayor?
What feedback? Yes, Ms. City Manager?
Thank you. The policy anticipates those types of requests, and so what I'd like to do is have Mark Lawrence come up, Mark here, and describe very briefly how individuals requesting, whether it be the mayor or another council member, Cesar Chavez, MLK, how that would work.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. The process is essentially recommended to, to the mayor and City Council that we use the 85 process, so...
The what process?
85. Item 85.
85A?
You've heard of 85A?
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So, through the 85A process, you would then bring it to City Council, you would discuss it, and then you would ask for a resolution to support that motion for whatever flag it is that's being proposed to fly.
And something that I...
Go ahead.
That I had thought about too is, we should really focus on civil rights legislation or Supreme Court rulings that had a significant impact into the civil rights movement on all fronts in the United States. But I think what you're asking is there is, there is a process right now that we can amend later, but for right now, there's a process. And I think the key for today is, I think we want to go ahead and move forward. I think people are anticipating and looking forward to this. It's going to say something about the city and this council and how we integrate and bring people in at a time where in our national discourse, there's so much hate being spewed out, to have something today that deals with love, I think is pretty, pretty amazing.
Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to go back to equity. And again, you know, when we look at policies, wanting to make sure, and I know this is just the first step, and I supported it, and now we're here to move forward and calendar. But again, what was the process? What stakeholders did we engage in that process? What were the, what were the, what are going to be the impacts, making sure that, you know, whoever is affected, that they get to participate? And as the mayor is mentioning, whether it be Cesar Chavez Day or, you know, Martin Luther King, you know, and I get what Mayor Tina Harrell is saying, just wanting to focus on certain federal or Supreme Court rulings, but again, when we talk about equity, and then what are those outcomes? You know, what are the benefits? And I think Councilmember Tina Harrell just mentioned, for example, in, for this proposition is that, again, what's happening with the discourse across the United States and, you know, wanting to, you know, really support, you know, love on and so forth, definitely those outcomes are great when we talk about making sure we have peace and we have hope and we have prosperity. But again, there has to be a process of equity in what we do as a council and the policies that we move forward. We can't just say that we want to do something for one group... We can't just say that we wanna do something for one group and then choose not to apply that to another group. And I'm not saying that we're not trying to do this here today, um, and I, and I'm not, I know, Ms. Hedo, but I'm not, I'm not saying we're trying to do that today, but in just all our policies, um, we have to be, um, very thoughtful a, a, about equity, cause we spew that we wanna be equitable, you know, towards our communities, but sometimes the policies that we put in place have unintentional consequences and sometimes are not equitable across the board. And shame on us as policymakers that are implementing these kinds of policies. And I don't only speak about equity here in the City of Santa Ana, but I do it at the Southern California Association of Governments, I do it at the Toll Road, and any board that I sit on. Because the decisions that we're making as it pertains to policy are vital and important. And, and if we choose to, again, just, just choose certain themes, and the next discussion that we're gonna have is fireworks. And there's a lot of people here that, you know, oppose fireworks, and there's a lot of people that support fireworks. And I, and, and so, again, I'm going to have that discussion about equity and what that means for the City of Santa Ana and what does that mean for our residents. So I just wanna encourage, and I wanna thank Mark Lawrence in letting us know that we get to do eighty-five As for each flag. And again, but making sure, each time we do an eighty-five A, that that process is equitable, that we reach stakeholders and assuring that people get to participate and understand that process to put a flag up. Sometimes we may think as council members that that information is getting out there. But guess what? Sometimes it's not. And so we have to do our due diligence to set good policies here today, so that moving forward, we don't have to have these discussions. So when eighty-five As come up among city council members, we already know what that process is, who can participate, who cannot participate, and, and on and so forth. And so I just wanted to just state those comments, because they're important as we move forward. In particular about, uh, you know, flags. I understand the importance, but there are also a lot of sensitivities in making sure that we, we reach as many people as possible and celebrate as many things in our community, whether it be the Vietnamese community, the Latino community, African-American community, um, on and so forth, and, um, and special interest groups as well. Thank you.
Uh, let me for a moment go to Councilman Benavides and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I appreciate the comments by, by, uh, both, uh, my colleagues have spoken and I, I agree with Councilman, uh, Amesqua, in that I'm very proud of the fact that, one, we're considering this item, uh, but beyond that, that we have actually taken item, uh, action previously in recognizing Harvey Milk, being the first city in, in the, in the county that has done that, that we host, uh, uh, the Pride Day or Weekend, uh, here in, in town, uh, that, uh, we did when, when, uh, the Marriage Equality Act was, was passed at the, or, or when actually the Supreme Court, uh, took its action, uh, that we did fly, uh, the Pride Flag and, and, uh, here in, in the City of Santa Ana. So those are all actions that we have, uh, taken both, uh, as a council, as a city, as individuals. We have stood with community for, for equality, uh, embracing diversity and, and standing up against, uh, injustice, frankly, and, and I'm proud of that. Uh, I, when, when this, uh, item was in its first, uh, draft form came before, uh, the council, uh, unfortunately, I found myself in a, in a tough spot and I, I didn't, uh, vote in support and, and for, for some of the reasons that, that were also mentioned, uh, tonight, the, the issue of equity, the, what we're looking at and considering tonight is a, uh, uh, and that's, actually, I do have a question for, for Mr. Lawrence. Uh, uh, but what we're looking at tonight is, from what I understand, is, uh, about five weeks over a month, uh, designation that would be by, if tonight's action passes, and that it would be for this, the, the specifically the, the Pride Flag, supporting LGBT, LGBT community. Uh, but that would be the only entity and the only flag that, that's, that doesn't have to come back through the eighty-five A process, right? Everything, this would be adopted, approved and set, and everything else would have to come, and it'd be sort of in question, but this one would be set.
Yes. Uh, Ms. Uh-
I think Ms. Uh, City Manager also wants to address-
That's, that's correct. Uh, last, last, uh, action on this item was to approve this. We're coming back today to affirm it. Uh, but that any other, uh, there was also, as part of that discussion, a request to come back with a policy for other items, Cesar Chavez, MLK. That's what we're doing today. So any member of the council who would like to have a flag displayed, would, would make that request through eighty-five A, the council would vote it up or down, and we would follow that process. But the only flag right now, based on a prior council action, asking it to be affirmed tonight, would be the, uh, the Harvey Milk, uh, Pride.
Thank you.
And if I can just clarify, um, you've already directed staff to fly the Pride Flag between May twenty-second and June thirtieth. So you don't, you don't have to do a resolution on that. We just thought that it would formalize the process.
And with that, I'd like, oh, I'm sorry, unless you have some-
Just, just my, my last comment is, is I, I, I still, and that, that's the part that's still, it's, it's difficult, uh, for me to wrestle with, because it, it, there, there does seem an imbalance to others. There, there's, was comments with regard to, uh, action, uh, flag, so potentially considering flags through an eighty-five A process, uh, that would be, uh, in line of, uh, supporting, uh, recognizing civil rights, either actions or decisions by Supreme Court and such. I, I don't know that that's formally within the, it, it's an idea that's being presented, that I think it's, it's a, it's a commendable one, but I don't know that that's necessarily clear within this, this, uh, the resolution that we're considering, uh, tonight. So, uh, I, I still have, you know, some, some questions, you know, personally. Uh, and I'll, I'll head back to Mayor and any other colleagues that, that are going to address.
Let me go back to, uh, Councilor Tina Hedo, I think he wanted to speak, and then I've, I've got thoughts as well.
Well, I just wanted to, I, I think we're, um, I think we have an option to vote it up or vote it down. I think that, uh, we have something that staff has brought before us. We already took a vote on this, so we've already made the decision to move forward. Um, I would just prefer to make a motion and take a vote. So I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll second, and I just have one-
Go ahead.
Now, because we've already agreed to fly the flag, uh, from May twenty-second through June, um, this, that's the reason why it's not going through the eighty-five A. But in the future, it would, just for clarification, just, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
My, my understanding of the motion, uh, is that, uh, the motion, uh, item two would be, uh, to display the, the flag on an annual basis? Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, that's correct.
But any other flag, because it hasn't been presented, would go through an eighty-five A? So for example, uh, Cesar Chavez birthday is March thirty-first. If somebody wanted to, to, uh, do that next year, then it would come before that and we would prepare for that.
The, the process going forward is eighty-five A, right?
Right.
And we just included it this time, because we're formalizing the process.
Because we've already done it, correct?
Right.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Councilor Benavides?
So, so I don't know if the, well, Council, Mayor Protem has, has in mail.
And I apologize, I was away for some of the, uh, initial discussion and conversation, maybe there were staff recommendation, but I do recall that we've already addressed the issue as it pertains to Harvey Milk and, and, um, the month, the, uh, Transgender Pride Month. Um, so that's already an issue that we already addressed. Now we're talking about policy as it pertains to any other flag or any other, um, issue that may, we, we may wanna recognize. I think that there's no simple answer to this, because I don't think here, at, you know, we can come up with an exhaustive list of all the different days or commemorative holidays or issues that we, that we all can think of, cause there's so many of them, they're numerous. And I don't think we can do that right now. So I think for lack of a better process, I think staff has done a, 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 you know, a very good job in trying to come up with some way where if we see, you know, there being some, uh, some date or some, uh, week or whatever it is that we wanna recognize, it'll come back to the council for its approval. So that's what it's supposed to, that's the way the process normally would work, just like it came before us on Harvey Milk Day. We address it, we discuss it, we vote it, and we consider it. So I, I don't know, um, outside of that, I'm not sure if, the only other thing I was gonna mention is that if it's not an eighty-five A process, maybe it can go through a committee and then the committee brings it forward. Either one works, but I think there has to be a way that we introduce, let's say, um, you know, we wanna recognize Cesar Chavez Day, for example. And then, you know, somebody introduces it, one of the, one of the council members can introduce it, and then it gets considered by the, by the entire city council, and then we make a decision on whether we wanna do it or not. And so it's gonna be subject to a vote, it's gonna be a policy discussion and a policy, um, uh, agenda item. So I, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if, um, yeah, I guess maybe I'm missing something, I'm just not sure if there's any other way to do this.
I think there might be, but let me go to Councilman Benavides and maybe I, I can have a suggestion after that.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I do think, I think, I do think there are options. Um, I, it, it's unfortunate, frankly, to be, at least personally, to be in, in this spot where I want to support, and I have been supportive, of the LGBT community, of Pride Day, uh, Harvey Milk, uh, recognition, and, and I think we should, as, as individuals, as leaders, as a city, and, and it's, it's a, something that I personally believe in. Ironically, uh, we're in a situation where part of the reason that we're behind and we support, and that I personally support, the, these, these issues, these causes, is because it's about equality. And what we're considering tonight is actually something that would be unequal and imbalanced, and we're in perpetuity going forward, saying there's one flag, one cause, that will be able to, uh, be commit, that the city is, is automatically committed to flying a flag for, for over a month, uh, and, and frankly, and then others will be more, uh, on a case-by-case basis, based on, uh, discretion of, of council, and there, there can be some arbitrary, uh, situation there, and, and just again, inequality of five weeks over potentially something that might be flown for a day or, or a much, you know, or more limited, uh, case. So, uh, for, for those reasons, and because of the fact that I do feel that it's, that it's unequal, uh, and, and there's a, a lack of fairness there, uh, in, in the process and for consistency. Unfortunately, I'm in a position tonight where I'm not going to be able to support the item as it's written tonight. I, I wish that we would go back and, and look at how we can factor in some of the comments, uh, and considerations that we're, that we're discussing tonight, so that there would be more parity, uh, and so that we can all feel good and, and about being able to support, uh, the flying of this and other flags. Uh, but that, those are my, my comments tonight, Mayor.
Let me, um, attempt to, um, suggest a, a substitute motion here. And the substitute motion-
Let me hear it, Mr. Mayor.
The substitute motion would be that, you know, we maintain the, the, the current policy, we've already voted, and I was part of the group, we voted yes for what we have right now, Harvey Milk Day, and also the, um, uh, you know, the, 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 the flag throughout the, the month for the LGBT, uh, community, the Pride Month. So that, I'm not suggesting we change that, we've already covered that ground, but I'm suggesting it go to committee, and, um, whichever committee, it could be more than one, but, you know, we have several council committees, and let's bring back something that's more equitable. Frankly, eighty-five A is not a policy, that's a free-for-all, and it's not equitable. And if we're trying to be a city that, that leads by example, let's not make this a bad example of what exactly we're trying to achieve. So again, I, I say, you know, support what we've already done, and I voted for Harvey Milk and the, and the, you know, LGBT Pride Month, but let's send it back to committee and bring back part of what Mayor Protem was talking about. Something that addresses, you know, Cesar Chavez and Martin Luther King. And, and, and look, those are just two that come to mind right now, but there are others. We could all, you know, get a draft, you know, through the city manager's office of, without violating the Brown Act, kinda like the way we do the block ranch. We could give some input, and then, you know, when, when we're done through that process, we'll bring it back here, re-agendize it, have a vote that I think we can all support. And, and, yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, then, would you be willing to take it to the legislative committee and let them come up with something there?
I, I, I would be. Leg, ledge is fine. I just want it to communicate with the rest of the council, again, through the city manager's office, so we don't violate any Brown Act. Because I, I just wanna make sure that this is an equitable process, as much as it can be. At the end of the day, we might, you know, we're not perfect, we might miss something or this or that.
Let's strive for equal outcomes.
But at least we'll strive for, for, for equality. Cause right now, you know, this is not equality. And, and, and I think we're doing an injustice, frankly, to, you know, Harvey Milk and, and LGBT community by saying, "Okay, we're gonna, you know, lift you up," but at the same time, I don't think they wanna be lifted up above any other group that, that feels that they're not, um, you know, taken into account or treated justly or fairly represented.
Uh, you know, be, as, as chair of the, of the legislative committee, I guess we don't have enough to do, so we'll absorb this and-
Do you want it to go to another committee?
No, we do, no, we're, we're fine. I'm, I'm good with taking that up. The only thing is, I think everybody is misunderstanding what we're doing, okay? Nobody is saying that we have Harvey Milk Day and-
And nobody else.
The Pride Month here, and we're gonna set it aside and nothing else is gonna be equal to that. We're just saying we addressed that issue as the first issue that came before us-
Correct.
-to put on the flag and to recognize it, because all of us thought it was an important, uh, civil rights and social justice issue. If we have Black History Month, that's something I can certainly support, and I'd love to entertain that as a consideration from one of my colleagues at the committee and come back to this council and, and entertain that as a discussion point. But that doesn't mean that, you know, these other months or these other dates are gonna be any more important than the others. They're all gonna be equal, and I should remind this council that when we are replaced by our successors, they can come back and unwind it and say, "Look, I don't think Harvey Milk Day is very important, I'm gonna take it down, we, let's reconsider it." So nothing is on a higher level, uh, on a higher playing field than anything else. I think it's all subject to consideration by this council. If we wanted to, we could unwind what we didn't, say, "Let's just not have any flags on any polls." But what we're saying is, "Look, we believe this is important, and as we move forward today, let's go ahead and consider these issues as important ones." So I don't see that there's an inequity. I think we just happen to address those two dates first, and I hope that we entertain others, cause there, there's very significant dates that I think we should be recognizing.
Well, my, my motion is we maintain what we have, but that, um, you know, we go to ledge committee and see what ledge committee comes back, and I'd be happy to submit, you know, my list, and I would recommend others do the same, of, of organizations and groups and causes that are appropriate. So if there's a second for the substitute, we'll-
I'll second.
Thank you.
I have a, a question, uh, Mayor, for, for, one for staff and one for my, my colleagues here in the council. One is, the, when we did fly the Pride Flag, uh, previously, uh, we removed the city's flag for, for that, that, that period. I, I just want to, uh, ensure, and I believe in the staff report, is that we are going to, would set something up so that any flags that we were to fly, uh, uh, outside of the, the city, the US state and, and POW flag would be in addition to, and there would be another place where we wouldn't have to replace or remove the city flag. Central City Flag is gonna be one that we're gonna be committed to, and, and that, that one's gonna be fly up.
What staff is recommending, Councilmember, is that we fly whatever commemorative flag just beneath the city flag.
Okay. So city flag is, will be there and will remain. Thank you. And then the other question for, for, uh, my colleagues and it, maybe for the maker of this motion, or, or perhaps the previous, um, uh, motion, action that, that, that council took. Uh, again, we're talking about qual, about, about equality, parity, fairness and such. Uh, I, I, I'm wondering whether we could consider going to, having within our policy that we'd consider, whether we, it's something that, an action we take tonight, or maybe something for, for the legislative committee to consider, is for there to be a, a set number of days, a maximum, a number, maybe a week, uh, so that, again, it allows for there to be more of a place of equality. Uh, and, uh-
I, I would be happy to amend the motion in such fashion that that be something that the committee would consider.
Mr. Mayor?
You know what? I think we're, we're splitting hairs up here. I think let it go to the legislative committee. Let the legislative committee come up with a process-
And a policy.
And then at that moment, we can then look at that policy and, and make a decision. But right now, we're-
Yeah, but the suggestion is simply that they consider a time limit, he's not setting a time limit.
That's fine, I mean, but that's something that I'm sure they would have considered anyhow.
I agree, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with Mayor, Councilmember Dina Hedl, and so maybe, again, look, if this policy of discussion is going to be had at the Legislative Committee, I think the policy needs to come back, because we're talking about an equities, equity, that this flag is, you know, this process is making sure that the flag is an equity policy, and so, again, making sure that we discuss, you know, the process, we discuss the impact, so as Councilman Benavides is talking about, you know, the timeframe of when a flag can be, I think that needs to be addressed. And then, what are the possible outcomes for the community and for those organizations? I think those are the three components of equity that we should, we should have the Legislative Committee look at, and so that's just going to be my suggestion.
That's fine.
Thank you.
That's fine. So with that, we have a motion and a second, I think second by Benavides, or, oh no, 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 I'm Mayor Potem, sorry, 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 my motion, second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
I'm going to vote no for consistency, and I'm hoping I'll be able to consider something when it comes back from Legislative Committee, an actual policy that we can...
We should have the suggestion we made.
And the first, the first, the first day I was going to commemorate was David Benavides' Day, so now...
Now, take that off, take that off. We made every, even Roman was going to vote yes for that.
I'm just kidding.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All right, with that, motion passes with one abstention. I'm kidding, not an abstention, but let's go on to the next item. So now, I believe, Madam Clerk, what item are we on? We have some speakers, let's hear from the speakers first, then we'll bring it to council for consideration. Cesar Placencia, this is on the options for the, you know, safe and sane fireworks, it's, you know, debating the whole issue of fireworks here in the city. Cesar Placencia, followed by Peter Maslovic, and then Coria Sharikur, and then Tim Rush. Please, Cesar, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, good afternoon, or actually, good night, good evening, Mayor Pulido and council members. I'm actually here representing three organizations that I volunteer at, and their fireworks stands, Santiago Little League, and Santa Ana High School Football, and Santa Ana High School Band. I'm here because I'm urging you guys not to shut down, or the ban of safe and sane fireworks, because of the fact that a lot of these organizations, that is their primary fundraiser, that is where they are able to expose, I'm sorry, that is a primary fundraiser that they can receive funds to expose the youths to sports, or different opportunities. I'm actually here speaking for the Santa Ana Band, because Mr. De Los Santos is exposing his band to the city of San Francisco, and a lot of the youth here are never going to get out of the city, won't have opportunities like that. I now touch on the issue of illegal fireworks. Banning the safe and sane fireworks is not going to, you know, not prevent the sell of illegal fireworks that cause a lot of the damage, that, you know, that is illegal. Another thing that I would like to, you know, also touch on is that, I think a lot of people would be open to different opportunities, but, you know, if you can figure out how to celebrate, you know, this great nation's birth and holiday, they'd be all for that. And also fund these organizations that rely on this major fundraiser that comes only once a year for us, I think that would be most beneficial. Again, if you can find a way to celebrate that great holiday of ours, and also fund these nonprofits, these organizations that rely on that main fundraiser, I think that's the problem, that's the problem solved. Thank you for listening to me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And then followed by Sharikur.
Hi, Mayor Pulido, city council members, just, we're here to plead our case. So, I've been coming up here since the early 80s, talking to you guys, and so, what I'm going to do tonight is, like I did last time, have my young instructor come up and give the speech. Your Honorable Mayor Pulido, city council members, you're looking at Santa Ana. I said this before, and I started with the speech, and I'm trying to follow this, and it's kind of hard, because we are the future. We're the Tekin Yutsu Kan Karate Organization, and we are here to, in order to let you know that we, as a nonprofit organization, we depend greatly on the funds we raise by selling TNT legal fireworks. It is our biggest annual fundraiser, and it helps greatly with our trips to karate tournaments across the country, and to the national and international karate championships. That's right, Santa Ana has been represented many times at the nationals, at the elite level.
National champion.
When they say Alexia Lopez, or Jose Lopez, first-place champion, they say from the city of Santa Ana. I realize that this banning effort is, has been pushed by citizens that believe that if safe and sane fireworks are outlawed in Santa Ana, it would greatly reduce the illegal fireworks in the city, and police can cite and apprehend those involved in lighting illegal fireworks. This argument is yet to be proven. All one has to do is just go and see other cities that have taken those opportunities of having safe and illegal fireworks, and it hasn't stopped the illegal fireworks there. You know, the activity in a closed city, and actually, in actual reality, many times not having a safe and sane option, it makes the illegal problem worse. We know from experience that many families that celebrate with safe and sane fireworks come back year after year to our booth and support our organization. These families and organizations will be punished by not having a safe and sane option to celebrate. You guys were talking about flags, the holiday, and trying to fix this holiday and the flag, what's going to fly, we're forgetting the most important, that baby right there. The American flag, the Fourth of July. We used to have a sign that said, "All-American Citizen," "All-American City," right? It didn't say all these other holidays that people wanted to celebrate. We have military men, okay? The Tekin Yutsu Kan Karate Organization has soldiers, okay, sergeants, from the city of Santa Ana. Those have not been recognized as much. Patriotism. We rely on these funds to say, "The future, the future, city of Santa Ana." Now, the other kid, it was just as nervous as I was, and he said, "Let us, give us other options where we can raise funds, so that we can support the nonprofit organizations, the future of our kids, the educating of doing the right thing, and being what you guys have grown up to be."
Thank you, if you could please conclude. Give me your final thought.
My final thought? What better way to celebrate an all-American city? By letting us continue doing what we have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Sharikur.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm listening to the people who preceded me, and I have great sympathy and compassion for the nonprofits in this city, I run one myself, and I think there are many other ways we can help to support them financially, in what they want to do and what they need to do. I personally, I've lived here for 23 years, I personally experienced the horror of what it's like here on July 4th now, and I've lived here many years. My property was on fire, I was very lucky that my house was saved. Had the fire department come a minute or two later, my house would be gone right now. It is still traumatic for me, I have been on a crusade now for the last year to help ban fireworks in Santa Ana, as most of the other 31 cities in the county have done, not because of just that, but because I've listened to stories about veterans in our city who have PTSD, people with dogs who've just been totally freaked out, people worried about the city going up in flames, listening to the police department and the fire chief, and then beseeching the city to please stop it and find an alternative way. I'm all for celebrating freedom, nobody loves freedom more than I do, because I went to parochial school, so, you know, I'm big on that. But I would really like to be able to be at my house and feel safe, and know that my neighbors are safe, because next year, it could be any one of you. If you live here, it could be your house, you always think it's going to happen to the other guy, but in this case, it didn't, and I'm very grateful, it's caused me a tremendous amount of stress since then, I have no idea what I'm going to do this year, or whenever. And I implore the city, let's find a way to really support these nonprofits, and make them whole, and feel good, give them what they need, but let's stop the craziness that goes on on 4th of July by calling a ban. Those people who are using illegal fireworks, it's going to be far easier to identify them, and it doesn't just happen on July 4th, by the way, it happens weeks before, it happens days afterwards, and it's absolutely horrifying to be in that, in that atmosphere. So I beseech everyone to please understand, this is not necessarily a personal issue with me, I care about my neighbors, and I love the city, and I want to see it be safe on the 4th of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharia, Tim Rush, followed by Doug Giann.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here tonight as President of the Wilshire Square Neighborhood Association, to tell you that our neighborhood is firmly and solidly in favor of you adopting a ban, I hope you'll do that. I'm one of those people who, for years, very definitely supported the discharge of safe and sane fireworks. Many years ago, I was president of Alliance Club, and we ran a fireworks stand and made a lot of money off of it, and I know what a great benefit these fireworks provide in terms of generating needed funds for many, many different nonprofits. So the opposition here to the fireworks isn't about vilifying the nonprofits. In fact, when a number of us came to the Public Safety Committee to talk about this issue, I had suggested an idea, I said, "Why not have the city provide perhaps some sort of a stipend for the various nonprofits for a year or two, to wean them off of these, the fireworks proceeds, as a way to ease and bridge the gap from a ban to them developing some other form of fundraising?" And I'm not sure where that went, but nonetheless, I still think that should be looked at. Another option would be for the city to have perhaps maybe two fireworks displays, one at Eddie West Stadium, and maybe one at Centennial Park, and offer the nonprofits an opportunity to sell merchandise and food and so forth, as a way to recoup some of their earnings. I don't suppose for a minute that will 100% fill the gap, but at the other, on the other side of the coin, and to use your term, Michelle, about equity, I think you have to stop and say, "Okay, let's do a Benjamin Franklin analysis here in terms of the pros and cons." When you look at all of the things that line up against having, allowing fireworks, the police and fire will tell you, the city is completely out of control, and it's not limited to a few neighborhoods, it's citywide. Ken Gominski said we'd have to have a police officer on every street corner in order to enforce the laws. And the problem with the safe and sane fireworks is that they provide unfortunately too much, too much of a, too much of a mist, of a haze, of smoke, to hide those who are discharging illegal fireworks. And the amount of illegal fireworks that are being discharged in Santa Ana has grown exponentially over the last 30 years. So it's completely out of control. When you consider the possible damage to property and people, their animals, the amount of trash and debris that's created, and all of the, all of the public safety mayhem, I just think the time has passed, city needs to have a total ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Councilman, and I would like to thank Councilwoman Martinez for saying that if you're not at the table, you'll be on the menu, because the fireworks sellers in the city of Santa Ana deserve a place at the menu. Your comments, ma'am, about being equitable, and the impact of the stakeholders, and the outcome, I think are very relevant to this particular item. There are 75 nonprofits currently in the city of Santa Ana, and while Mr. Rush's comments about finding some other way to fund them is worth considering, I think that you look at the hours that the people invest in making this work for their youth that they address with karate, and band, and other activities, I think you have to consider that there is people who are willing to put in long hours to make this work, and to ban them, I think the collateral damage would be phenomenal. Mayor Potem talked about using the will of the people to make decisions, and I think that's a very important factor in this. Some of the other cities have considered it, and brought it to the people, and left it to them as something that they would vote for. I concur that there are things in the city as far as illegal fireworks, and I've seen them Christmas, New Year's Eve, I had bottle rockets going off in my neighborhood on Easter. Now, there were no fireworks booths open in the city of Santa Ana, so obviously, they are coming in without any control. I sent all of the members of the board, as well as the mayor, an email this afternoon, and there are some strategies, I think, that police and law enforcement could take under consideration, to identify those neighborhoods where there are excessive amounts of fireworks. Article that was in the Register just last year about a group that was arrested with 3,000 pounds of fireworks, now that, I'm thinking, you know, in some environments, that would be considered urban terrorism, because that much explosives going off at one time could do some significant damage. You will not be able to do that with the safe and sane stuff, unless you follow some really off-the-wall routines. So, please, consider the damage that would be done to the nonprofits if they were to be banning safe and sane fireworks in the city of Santa Ana. I thank you very much.
Thank you, John Kelly, please. And after that, Tonya...
That's it. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. John Kelly, Vice President with TNT Fireworks, address on file. Just a few thoughts here for your consideration, in reviewing the staff report, as well as some recommendations for your consideration. Second paragraph, page one, we received 474 calls for the month, about an equal amount during the 4th of July, I was just curious how that compared to other 4th of Julys, is that going up, is that stable, is that going down? I don't know. Second full paragraph, page two, states there are nine cities within Orange County, correction, there are 10, Huntington Beach is not listed on there. Huntington Beach had a pilot program in 2012, 2013, council put the issue to the voters November of 14, passed by 64%. Page three, first paragraph explains an additional fee of $75,000 that should be allocated for budget purposes going into 2016, stating that California State Fire Marshal has taken, has placed the responsibility of disposal on the local jurisdictions. I think probably in the room, I study legislative action in Sacramento, probably as closely, or more closely than most, I'm not aware today of any action taken by the state that repeals their responsibility to dispose of confiscated illegal product in California, so I just wanted to point that out. I had a question, too, that maybe you can answer in deliberation, $113,600 in 2016 staff expenses, is that just for the 33 officers, or is that for all officers on duty? Page four, under option three... Page four, under option three, last sentence, "As a majority of Santa Ana residents would abide by the ban, unless enforcement would be necessary." I guess what motivation do I have if I'm using illegal fireworks because the council banned safe and sane to stop doing what I'm doing now with respect to illegal fireworks? Going forward, just kind of in the spirit of your enforcement, education, prevention, TNT Fireworks, I started in 1989, so been coming to these council meetings for a while. We have always been engaged in cooperative programs with PD and fire over the years, off and on. We would pledge to do the same. Just some thoughts here, with respect to all the money that is spent and all the calls that were generated, how many tickets and arrests were made with respect to illegal fireworks? What are we going to do to step that up? What is our goal on the 4th of July? Is it to go to the two fireworks shows and go home and go to bed at 10 o'clock? I don't know.
John, if you could please give us your final thought.
Lastly, I would just offer up a pilot program that TNT Fireworks is experimenting with, which is a phone application, which we would be happy to work with staff on, that would identify anonymously and date and timestamp, as well as a geocode, illegal fireworks activity in the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. First of all, I want to thank the Santa Ana PD and the fire department, because they are very responsive. And I'm sorry for some of the stuff that they have to deal with, but I just wanted to share, mine isn't all political, I don't think, but I just want to say, as a citizen, I've lived here for 14 years, and I grew up in the city of La Mirada when there was fireworks available for safe and sane. And there's this nostalgia of having fireworks in the city of Santa Ana. And I have two grandkids that are in the neighborhood, and one of the things, it's the greatest thing, it's the only time of year that I see everybody away from their social media and everything else, and getting to know neighbors by having barbecues, block parties, and things of that nature. So I know that there's plenty of cities that do these fireworks displays. I don't see neighbors and families coming together. I think if we stop with some of the social media and have conversations with their neighbors, I think a lot of this stuff, we could come to an amicable decision. I do have a question, the same thing with the number of calls. You know, the one thing that is extremely annoying to my husband and I is barking dogs, and I don't know how many calls or the city responds to that and what it takes for the city's time, but I don't think that the answer would be to ban dogs from the city of Santa Ana, because there's a few barking dogs. Just a point I wanted to make.
The shortest speech got the biggest reaction there, but I think excellent point, well So, look, I think we all have some thoughts on this. One more speaker.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to run here from the other end of the city and speak tonight after the firework options. And the key word up here is options, not ban fireworks. That's an option, but not a good option. Some of the options, you know, our city charter allows fines for citations of $100. People spend more than $100 on any type of illegal fireworks, or even safe and sane fireworks, but why would you, $100? Maybe the city needs to go back and look at that and maybe raise the fine or citation for found with illegal fireworks. Also, the state has different ideas regarding fines or if they're immediately found guilty of more than 25 pounds of illegal fireworks, it's a $1,000 fine. This is the state. I still think we're in the state of California, so maybe we should look at that. More than 5,000 pounds is a $5,000 to $10,000 fine, plus a year in jail. We might get people's attention. Over 5,000 pounds is $50,000 and a one-year prison sentence as well. So once again, we're going to get somebody's attention. Our PD does a great job, and the fire department does a great job, but, you know, we're talking about safe and sane fireworks. By eliminating those fireworks, you're not going to have any more control over the illegals, none whatsoever. I sent a two-page letter to you guys, to all the council people, and it's part of the minutes that you guys have before you. Please read that and look at it if you haven't already. I represent AYSO, and I also represent the other nine soccer leagues, U Soccer Leagues. I'm the president of that group. And most of the leagues come out and support one or the other fireworks, depending what part of the city their most of their kids are in. We make sure we sell it to adults, we don't sell it to kids. So I just think, really, look at this again, if you would, for us, please. Banning the fireworks is not the solution. Thank you.
Okay. With that, let me bring it back to council for thoughts. David is the chair.
Sure, I'll go ahead and begin, make some comments. I do chair the Public Safety Committee, and this item has come before the committee on several occasions. And the conversation started actually right after the last, here at council, right after the last summer's 4th of July. Number of residents in the city contacted, reached out to the city, reached out to the council. There seemed to be a serious concern with regard to the amount of illegal fireworks, the number of illegal fireworks that were seen throughout the city during the 4th of July last year. So there was reason enough, concern enough, to be able to have the council discuss it and then send it to the Public Safety Committee. And again, we discussed it there on several occasions. There also were a couple of articles in the media, print media, when this item did come up for discussion at the council. And it's been interesting to see that we have had, and even tonight, people sending correspondence to us, making comments on both sides of the issue. Some that are opposed and some that are in favor, some that are opposed to safe and sane fireworks, some that are in favor of us keeping safe and sane fireworks. Overall, in public safety, some of the speakers that came and addressed us today that have legitimate concerns and questions and are asking for us to ban the fireworks also came and spoke at Public Safety and were clearly, you know, calling for us to consider a ban. We at the Public Safety Committee considered initially, we asked staff to come up with several options. They came up with initially four options, and from there, the committee narrowed it down to three that would be viable, and that's what we have tonight. And what I would, what might be helpful, Mr. Mayor, we have, we've had the comments from the public, but I don't know if we would want.
I think there's a short presentation from staff. Why don't we allow them to do that, and then we'll continue with our process here.
Good evening. I know this is a very emotional issue on both sides of the fence, but before I get started with the presentation, I do want to acknowledge all the focused discussion and thoughtful discussion by members of the Public Safety Committee, the chairman, of course, and then council member, Tina Harrow. So thank you for that, because we did hear both sides, as you were explaining on this issue. So yes, there are 10 cities that do allow fireworks. We have them listed here, and then we did include the 10th, Huntington Beach, that was commented on at one of the Public Safety Committee meetings. So just to take you back a little bit, April 4th, 1986, the city of Santa Ana Municipal Code allowed for the sale and use of safe and sane fireworks. And it's our understanding that selected nonprofits enter into a sales agreement, generally allowing them to retain 50% of all fireworks sale proceeds before subtracting rental, fire-related, and land use permit fees. And September 29th through 2014 through November 24, 2015, we had five separate meetings at the Public Safety Committee meeting, and I know some of these people were there consistently, others attended one or two meetings, but we did have a lot of thoughtful discussion and focused discussion on this issue for quite some time. And that's how we came to be here tonight with some of the options. To talk a little bit about the calls for service, so in June of 2015, we received 474 calls for service throughout the month of June, so that's even prior to the 4th of July holiday, and that doesn't include the duplicate calls that come in for one location. And then July 1st through July 6, 2015, we received 473 calls for service, reference to the fireworks activity. 223 of the 473 calls were received during an eight-hour period on the 4th of July. And this equated to about a call for service every single two minutes. And to be quite frank and quite blunt, and I've mentioned this to the Public Safety Committee in the past, it was chaos. It overwhelmed our resources. We were unable to adequately provide service to the community at that point. And I did have 34 officers just assigned on overtime. I was out there myself, deputy chief was out there, and Commander Gominski was out there. And what I saw, just to be very transparent and upfront, it was chaos and lawlessness. I even got out of my car at one point to let some folks know that they couldn't light illegal fireworks, and they shot them out my car. So I figured the bigger part of valor was probably retreating, so I went ahead and left the area, but we didn't have the resources to deal with that. So that's kind of from that public safety perspective, and I completely understand that this touches a bunch of other issues, such as the nonprofits, which are very important to our city. A little bit more on calls for service, just reiterates the amount of calls for service that we did deal with in that short period of time. Also have some information in terms of what the fire authority saw throughout the county. Those are county-related stats. And I just, one incident that did resonate during the 4th of July was on Townsend Street when the fire department came under fire, if you will, of skyrockets while they're trying to put out a fire that was caused by fireworks. And yes, probably illegal fireworks, probably the aerials. And where the challenge comes in for the police department is trying to enforce and make arrests for illegal fireworks when you have the activity masked by the safe and sane fireworks. I was in a plain car, I would be able to drive up right on people as they were using the illegal fireworks, and as soon as they saw the uniform, they took off running. And so it was very difficult to do any type of significant enforcement on the 4th of July. So some of the options that we came up with, and it was no policy change, so we would continue status quo, and fireworks, safe and sane fireworks would remain legal in the city, a ban on fireworks to take effect in 2016, which is, in our opinion, a little bit of a compressed timeframe. Or number three, the ban of fireworks to take effect in 2017. Some of the other considerations that were discussed at the Public Safety Committee included a partial ban of fireworks, or what we called the Anaheim model, but the Anaheim model is based on topography, where they allow it in certain parts of the city and not in other parts because of the fire danger. So we weren't able to find something that would work here in the city of Santa Ana in terms of allowing it in one part of the city and not in the other. We also discussed a ballot initiative and a moratorium as part of the conversations, but the options that came out of the Public Safety Committee are the three that you see there. And briefly, to touch on each of the options, we don't expect, if there's no change in the policy, we don't expect the activity to change. Maybe it will increase and get worse. And in terms of the fee that was mentioned by one of the speakers, we've been informed by the county, and I'm not sure if the division fire chief would have any more information on this, but that they were going to pass on the cost of disposal to the cities. Ken, do we have any more information on that?
It's my understanding, not from the county, that that would be the fact.
So that's, if that comes to be, then that's going to be additional amount of money that we'll have to pay to make sure that we dispose of these fireworks properly. So the expected city cost is $188,000. Option number two, we expect to have similar level of activity, since it's such a compressed timeframe, and there'd be less time for the nonprofits to find other funding sources or other funding opportunities. And then we would ask for the consideration of additional funds to do public outreach, to at least make an effort to try to inform people that the fireworks were illegal, if they were going to be banned here in the city. So that would increase the cost by about $10,000. And lastly, on option number three, some of the key points are, we think that there would be a decrease in community complaints and activity. As I said before, strictly from a focus on a public safety standpoint, we're overwhelmed as a police department. I have more officers out there working fireworks than on patrol to handle just regular calls for service, so that's the big challenge for us. If you do a ban in 2017, of course, it allows nonprofits more time to see what other fundraising, fundraising opportunities may be available for them. And then, of course, some other considerations in terms of funding would be the public outreach, but also additional enforcement monies to try to really send the message that if they're illegal here in the city, that we're going to take this serious and hold people accountable for shooting off fireworks, whether they're the illegal kind or the safe and sane fireworks if there's a ban. So that cost for option number three would be higher. And then I would like to open it up for questions.
Thank you. If you could be available, I think there would probably be a discussion here, and we'll call you up. But thank you very much for that, Chief. Let me, well, we, I don't know if you're done yet as chair.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So ultimately.
Oh, Mayor.
Mayor, sorry, I just demoted you, didn't I?
Well, earlier, somebody called him Mayor Pro Tem Polito, too, I think, so. I don't know, I don't know what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor Polito. So just going back, ultimately, there were several different options that were considered. Public Safety Committee, we discussed them. Three of them presented here tonight, as Police Chief did mention. One that if we were to consider ban, the idea of 2016 for a number of reasons, and city attorney's office also spoken to that option. It seems to be a very compressed timeframe. There may be some contracts that have already been let, arrangements with nonprofits and such. So if we're considered banned, essentially, the 2017 timeframe is what would be more feasible. So basically, we have, as far as viable options, that are in the presentation, are either option one, no policy change or ban 2017. Although I think that there are still, part of the reason that Councilman Tina Harrow and I did want to make sure to bring this to council is because there are very likely several other options, ideas for us to consider, or at least we wanted to make sure to have the council have a full range, or have an opportunity to speak into it. Personally, just I'll wrap with my comments and then see what other thoughts, considerations. And I've expressed this at Public Safety Committee. I'm one that's very much torn. I've seen some of the problems that the illegal fireworks do cause, the problems actually right down the street, one of the incidences that Fire Chief mentioned, and the resources that we have to dedicate at the same time as some of the speakers that were here as well. There is the benefit to not only the nonprofits and the great programs, whether it be the karate programs or the music programs, but one of the other community members also mentioned that the nostalgic and the community building, and that's something that I shared also with Public Safety. I remember that as a child, it's one of the things I'd look forward to, and something that I look forward to even to this day, is that time to be able to come together with my kids, with my neighbors, family. And there are a lot of families throughout the city that do observe in a safe way and safe manner, and you do have those that kind of spoil it for the rest. So, you know, I definitely want to be able to hear from some other members of the council and see what other ideas might.
All right. I think this is those types of subjects where everybody has an opinion. Please, let's go ahead with Councilor Raina, please.
As you can hear, and you'll continue here, it's definitely a challenging situation. And one of the things that I've heard over and over and over again really affects the illegal fireworks, it really doesn't affect the safe and sane fireworks. the illegal fireworks. It really doesn't affect the Safe and Same fireworks, all the chaos, all the mayhem's that are taking place all over the community. Illegal fireworks are not on the ground. That's one of the things that entice people, is that it goes up in the air and it makes colorful. Safe and Same do not go in the air, specifically to stay on the floor. That's why they legalize those particular ones. And you hear a lot of the people talking about the nonprofits and having the nonprofits finding other sources of funding to be able to affect whatever programs they're talking about. You know, one of the conversations people talking right now is Prop 47, and what kind of impact has that had in our community as far as continued violence? When I first got on the city council, our Parks and Rec sports programs had one sport, had one sport. When I grew up in that program, we had sports all year round. I had options to keep my time occupied. And because of the budget cut, because of the nonprofits and the schools and the city cutting options, our kids didn't have a lot of choices. And you're seeing a lot of that manifest now with the higher crime rate. It's not just Prop 47, it's not just the waves that come and go, but it's a lack of options that they had seven years ago, and we're starting to see those repercussions now. These nonprofits are filling a void that we truly need in our community. They truly are, and we should be helping them. Personally, I don't think we've done enough to, to, to address the illegal fireworks, whether it's a PSA campaign, an educational campaign, talking to the neighborhood associations and PTAs, specifically opening their eyes to that. I, I haven't seen that as much as I'd like to see that. And maybe it's taking place, but maybe not to, to the level that it should be. I know that we have a lot of challenges when it comes to our, our law enforcement, and we're spread a little thin. A lot of the, not all of them, but a lot of these legal fireworks, they come in months prior to, and technically, they happen all year round, but they come in months prior to, and they come in in big shipments. So they're being stored at somebody's home, at somebody's house, in somebody's storage. If we could dedicate a team specifically to target that, then I think we could, we could minimize that. I know that we have a team specifically focusing on cold court, cold case teams, or cold cases. Maybe for June 4th to July 4th, we have them dedicated specifically to this. That way, we can, we can focus more on enforcement without really having a negative impact on the rest of the law enforcement activities. I, I am completely supportive of Safe and Same fireworks. I think we need to do a better job in addressing the illegal fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mesca, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna say that I'm, feel torn because I grew up with Safe and Same, my children grew up with Safe and Same, and I understand where the chief's, where the chief is coming from, where it makes enforcement difficult. But at the same time, you know, we have the nonprofits. It's a very difficult decision for us to make. I wish we had more options at this point. I, I know that we have had some PSA, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief. What, what else have we tried in terms of going after the illegal fireworks?
Well, when we put out the 34 officers out on overtime, they're focused on enforcement. They're there to take people to jail, to cite people, but it's very difficult to do. We've done public service announcements. As a matter of fact, we did one with the Angels. They, they supported us on, on one, and that was a while back. We've done posters. We've actually partnered up with, I believe it was TNT, Mr. Kelly that spoke up here years ago when I was a public information officer. We did some things together there. And I'll be honest with you, I, I've been here since 1990, and Fourth of July has been a very busy night, very chaotic, every single Fourth of July. And it has, it ebbs and flows. Some years, it's a little bit more active than others, but it's the same chaos every year. It's just this last year, it seemed to be more so. It seemed to be escalated. And I think some of it might have to do with, with some of the illegal fireworks being a little bit more robust, maybe than, than in the past. It's not a, it's, I know it's not an easy issue to grasp because there are all these other areas that it, that it touches. But just strictly from that public safety standpoint, I believe the men and women of our police department have, have done a great job in trying to really contain the issue with the fireworks. For example, we do undercover operations off different social media platforms. And I've, if you recall, I had sent some pictures out of all the different illegal fireworks we've confiscated. And unfortunately, I don't think we, we made a dent, because a lot of these are coming from Nevada and Arizona as well, and it makes it difficult.
Thank you.
Just real quick follow-up.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Moreno.
You'd mentioned some of the, the activities you've done to reg, to inform the community. The, the few examples that you kind of touched about seemed like it was not recent.
You know what? If I can call Ken Gominski up here, he's been in charge of the program, so I'll tell you, or he's able to tell you what we've done recently. As far as a public service, service announcement, I know I did that some time ago, and we've done posters as well. And look, there's Commander Gominski.
My, my, I guess my question or my comment is, within this last year or the previous year, what type of educational activities, workshops have we've done in the community? One, two, five, 20?
So, the chief and the fire chief went and did the public service announcement. That was last year. We also printed up a whole bunch of flyers. We then handed the flyers out to neighborhood associations. We had our volunteers go out and try to put the flyers up in various different businesses. We floated the information via our social media. We floated the information through the neighborhood associations. We did more outreach last year than we have done ever in the past, based on the issue from the year before that people felt we hadn't done enough. So we ramped it up even more last year. And as the chief said, the message either didn't get out, or it wasn't received.
Sure, sure. Let me ask you this. It sounds like the messages that you put out were really more leaflets and handouts, rather than sitting down in front of a group of people and educating them why this is a bad thing.
I can tell you that I get an opportunity to talk at a whole bunch of neighborhood associations. And leading up to the Fourth of July, it was one of the topics that every neighborhood association wants to talk about. And what we had discussions about, the issues with the illegal fireworks, every chance that we had an undercover operation, we went with social media, we went out with the regular media. Additionally, we would go and have those discussions at the neighborhood associations. Did everybody see that we're trying to address the illegal fireworks?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, we, we did do a thing with the elementary schools where we had them color things and then turn them into us, and we posted them all over the place.
That's fantastic. You know, I, I would, as we move forward, and, and any component of trying to educate the community on any topic, unfortunately, we have a very small percentage that participate in our neighborhood associations. That's not the bulk of our community. And the majority of our community that come together really utilize the schools, whether they're PTAs, PTOs, or the DACA groups that are supporting that. And that's really where we should be focusing and targeting our, our energy, because that's where our community really exists.
And we did that also last year. We reached out to the schools, gave the schools flyers, and had the schools send the flyers home with their kids. I can't tell you how many schools we, we had that done, but it was at least 20.
Sure. You know, part of my challenge, and I've been in the nonprofit world for 30 years, and I'm sure that all the people that work, that are sitting in this room right now when it comes to nonprofit, unfortunately, when you give a flyer, it turns into a plane or to a hat or to the trash, and it never gets to where it needs to get to be. So you can put 100,000 flyers out there, the chances are that's exactly where it's going to end up. We need to figure out a different way of delivering our, our, our message, and whatever that looks like. Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Now let me go over to Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank the residents that have come before us, whether you're on the pro or con side, you know, this is what America's about, about democracy and, you know, sharing each other's opinions, whether we're in favor or, or against a certain policy that we have here in the city. And so thank you and welcome to your home here in the City of Santa Ana and our council chambers. I'm glad, because most times, in particular when we're talking about finance and budgets, we, we have an empty room. But when we have issues, social issues, you know, typically, the room is very full, and this is when we see a lot of our residents. And so I'm hopeful as we move forward that, too, when we're looking at our budgets and finances, that really dictate, you know, the city's policies and how we fund our police departments and other programs and services, that you all will participate as it pertains to our budget. And I do talk about the budget because, as our chief just indicated, the amount of money that is going to, to, to really combat the, really, the illegal activity of fireworks. And I don't want to speak all about the Safe and Same. It's really about the illegal activity of fireworks, and that is a, a major problem in, in our city. And we do need to address it. And so, but it is separate from the Safe and Same fireworks. And how do we get to a middle ground is, is not an easy one, because I do agree with the residents that are opposed and wanting to ban, because the quality of life is important for our community. It is, it is essential that we have a good quality of life. And illegal fireworks really puts the quality of life at jeopardy for our city. And so I am supportive of our neighbors when we speak about the illegal fireworks and the quality of life, and really how that is at jeopardy. On the opposite side, when we're talking about our nonprofits and how they are able to secure funds to help our kids with after-school programs, whether it be karate, whether it be wrestling, whether it be football, on and so forth, those are important programs and they need the funding. We all know in the City of Santa Ana, the only way that our kids are able to participate is through, 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 through sports and other activities, is by raising dollars, because our parents can't afford, you know, to help, you know, really, you know, their children and pay for that. And so I, I want to thank the nonprofit organizations for always stepping up here in the City of Santa Ana and, and helping our kids. And so I wanted to state that. I think over the years, many of you have heard, you know, my opposition about the illegal fireworks and my support for our chief and, and our fire department and wanting to make sure that we nip this in the butt. And so I'm a leader, I'm always vocal, I'm always upfront. I think you all know where I stand. I, I don't ever, you know, change, you know, my mind. I speak my mind, and some people don't like that, right? Because sometimes the truth hurts. But, but, but we have to, when we're up here and we're leaders, sometimes we have to really take the heat. And, and, and this is a, a subject where we, we are getting the heat on both sides. And so what is it that we're going to do that is equitable and that's in the best interest of our residents? And I think that's what we need to put into context here today, because at the end of the day, we need to make sure that, well, whatever we decide, whether we decide to ban, or whether we decide to, you know, the other options that our police chief has presented to us, do we go out to the voters? Do we impose more fees, on and so forth? I'm going to tell you, as I told some people on the phone today that I spoke with, and be very candid, that I, I spoke to many nonprofit organizations. I, I also had the opportunity to speak with Mr. John Kelly from TNT, trying to be responsive and, and wanting to let folks know where I stand. I, I think that it is fair that we go to the voters to decide if we want to continue. And, and, and some of you may say, well, you know, Michelle, why would you do that? Why would you, you know, want to take it to the people? Because at the end of the day, ultimately, seven of us, you know, we have a lot of power and influence, and so does our city government. But when we want to unify, bring people together, wanting to hear different perspectives, on an issue like this, that is very dear and close to many of your hearts, whether you're on the pro or against side, for me to, to tell you where I'm at personally, and how I feel about Safe and Same fireworks or illegal fireworks, really will get in the way of really making a really good, solid decision for the entire city. And so I'm, I'm hoping that my colleagues will consider, and again, we have three various options, options in front of us, that we do make a decision tonight, because there, there's a lot at risk here for the nonprofit organizations, you know? Are they going to continue to, you know, they, they're counting on these funds to help with their programs. And we can't leave them out and, and, and out there and trying to figure out, well, we're going to come back in two weeks, three weeks, or two months. I'm at, we need to make a decision here tonight. Do we want to ban? Do we want to take it to the voters? Do we want to impose fees so that we cover, you know, our police costs against the illegal activity of fireworks? It is a decision that needs to be made here today. And so I want to tell my colleagues that I would be supportive, because it's, it's a fair thing to do, is to take it to, to the voters to, to make that decision. Huntington Beach did that, and, and, and their decision was made. I think it was last year, Chief Rojas, or a year and a half ago. So, you know, and, and I want to let the nonprofit organizations know that I know that the amount of money that you all raise is significant, and it matters. And I think the residents that have come here that are in opposition understand, and they also sympathize and want to figure out ways. Many years ago, we asked to do fireworks displays, and we started that at Centennial Park. And, you know, the first couple of years, it, it wasn't very successful. People, as, as the resident here came before us, is that, you know, people were having their own block parties in their neighborhoods and getting together and, and wanting to know one another, and the children were, were out there. And I think people feel more comfortable in their neighborhoods and wanting to do that. And so, you know, I have not been to Centennial Park the last two years because of my disappointment and the amount of money that we are spending, right, to, to, to produce this firework display. And we're really not attracting a lot of folks. And so I don't know if it's the city on the city's end that we're not marketing this, as Councilman Reyna suggested it, as it pertains to illegal fireworks and providing the education, how we're actually communicating with our residents, whether it be something positive to, to move us in the direction to do fire displays, or trying to educate people about illegal fireworks. You know, and, and I think we continue to, to say this to our staff, that we're really not good at doing that. And I know we're in the process of hiring consultants to help us with branding and marketing and communications, because we'll, I'll be the first to admit, Santa Ana, and, 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 and no harm to, or, you know, wanting to say nothing, something negative to our staff, because they do a fabulous job, but that's really not our expertise. We've come to realize that we need to figure out other strategies to really engage our community, where they'll be able to capture the information that's needed, whether it be to prevent the illegal fireworks, or trying to continue to educate with TNT on the Safe and Same fireworks with our police department. And so those are just my comments now, Mr. Mayor. But I would also just like to keep in mind, and as we continue this dialogue and with whatever decision that we do make, because I think we need to make one tonight, that we also try to figure out ways, and we've talked about this in the past, how can we continue, whether we take it to the voters, we, we impose, or we do whatever, we, we, how can we continue to help these nonprofit organizations, these schools, to, to, to have a sustainable path of funding so that they can continue to fund their programs that are really helping the City of Santa Ana, making sure that our kids are staying away from gangs, on and so forth. And so I'm, I'm hopeful, and I know Councilman Tiñanero has brought this up before, is that, you know, we have all these community events, whether it be Cinco de Mayo, whether it be Dia de las Fiesta, Patrias, where how can we utilize the nonprofits to sell their goods and services at those events? Or look at the City of Orange, and I mentioned this in the past, the City of Orange has their international festival, and they allow nonprofit organizations to sell food and, and other, you know, activities, you know, that, that, whether they're selling, you know, merchandise. We, we, we can do the same here in this city. It's just really creating a process that's equitable to helping these nonprofits continue to raise money, on whatever decision we continue to make. I think it's an opportunity for us to do something good for these groups.
Thank you. Now let me go to Salvador, please.
It's the handsome councilman.
The handsome, the good-looking guy.
You know, a, a while ago, my wife called me up and she said, hey, your sister-in-law wants your daughter, they live down in Tesoro, down in Santa Margarita. And he said, I want you to, your daughter wants to go, or your sister-in-law wants your daughter to go and learn how the cheers for Tesoro High School. And then they get to cheer with the cheerleaders on Friday. And she says, it's $150 per, per child. I said, oh, heck no. There's no way. She says, no, but your sister-in-law's paying for it. I said, well, then let's do this. You know? So we went. So I, I saw it. It was great. I came back to my school, and I told the cheerleaders at my school, I said, hey, I've got a great idea for you, for our fundraiser. I said, you can teach these young girls at Fullerton your cheers, and then have them cheer with you on Friday. And, and they said, oh, no, Mr. T, we already do that. I said, oh, how much do you guys charge? She said, $30. I said, how many girls do you have out there? She says, about 100. Tesoro has 100 also, but they charge $150. So that community, that organization is able to raise $15,000 in one fundraiser. The same fundraiser in a working-class community is $3,000. So do you see, do you see there's an issue here? So, do you see there's an issue here? So, what happens? What happens is the girls from the working community use that $3,000 to help others who don't have enough money for their uniforms and so forth, whereas the wealthier community uses that money for a private trainer, uses a professional choreographer. So, I just wanted to share that because it's important that we realize that there is a tale of two cities, okay? Now, for me, I like good, hard, wholesome arguments. I don't like hyperbole. So, this is what I heard tonight, this is what I heard. I heard one group saying, we have an issue with quality of life on the Fourth of July and leading up to the Fourth of July and maybe a few days after. I heard another group saying, hey, but I understand that, it's a nuisance maybe for some, but it's something that in the end of the, at the end of the day, we are able to fundraise for our programs in a community that sometimes we don't get to fundraise that much, to be able to do what we always talk about, which is keep students off the streets, give them something to do. So, there's arguments on both sides here. I've been on the council since 2006. That's a long time, that's a long time. I had more hair back then, you know, and the whole bit. So, I've heard the arguments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I've heard the arguments and I've heard people come up and complain and I've heard people talk about their issues. And I have always stood firm that we're going to support fireworks. Until last year, I thought this is something that we have to discuss today. We have to bring it out to the forefront. And the reality is, is that it was out of control last year. It was really out of control. We can't deny that, let's be honest. So, what we're talking about, our police is saying, look, guys, it's difficult for us to police because while someone is lighting a safe and sane firework, someone right down the street is lighting an illegal firework. So, what happens when we come in? If we see people crouching down and getting ready to light, we don't know which is which, it's very difficult to see that. 474 calls in one night, that's a lot of calls. So, as a council, we have to look at everything. We have to look at public safety on that night. What if there's a burglar happening in one part of the city? What if there's other activity that we need our police officers to go find? So, those are the kind of things that we wrestle with. So, I just want everyone to know that as we go forward here, can we all agree, there are pros and cons to this particular issue? And we cannot say that one is more important than the other. I think we have to look at and say, they're all important. Our policing is important and so forth. So, we have a few options up here, but I want to narrow it down to two. I wanted to narrow it down to two more. I know Mr. Kelly from TNT is here, I'm going to teach him a new Spanish word he probably doesn't know. In Spanish, in the Mexican culture, we say something called mochate. See, you guys know what I'm talking about? I know you're making a profit and it's a good one. And you know that I supported you at Fullerton when they were talking about this ordinance. I talked to Sharon Cork personally and told her it was a good idea. Mochate means you got to cut a little slice. If you see a community that you want to continue to sell to, we might want to look at a regulatory fee to increase the amount of money that comes in so that we can now police and add police on that night, if that's the area we want to go to. Remember that word, mochate. It means you got to cut a little slice for the city to continue to serve your product without hurting our quality of life, okay? So, that's important, let's take a look at that. The other is what Councilmember Martinez said, is that we have a, there's a possibility here that I'm thinking that we might have to go to the voters because I've heard this argument every year. And one of the things that I want to tell those people who have constantly talked about the quality of life diminishing during the Fourth of July, is that's why it's here with you tonight. We are having a discussion that has never happened in the time, in the amount of time that I've been on the city council, which has been 10 years. We've heard you at the Public Safety Committee, but we've never brought it up here for an actual vote or to have direction to do something. So, maybe this is the time to, we've heard both sides, maybe this is the time to go to the community and let the community decide. So, those are, and by the way, we can also use the word mochate if it goes to the community because we can add a regulatory fee to that as well if it goes to the community. So, I think that's something we should take a look at. So, I just wanted to tell everyone, thank you for coming here, what you do is important. People don't understand, you guys are out there working on a shoestring budget and on top of that, you spend, what, three or four days, every 24 hours a day, making, five days? Lord have mercy, sprinkle, sprinkle, okay? That's a lot of days, 24 hours a day to go man a fireworks, a firework stand, to be able to provide our students a quality program. And so, I feel your pain because I also run a program, I feel your pain. I also understand that as electeds, we have to look at the overall spectrum and it doesn't mean that you're taking sides with one or the other, it just means that that's the responsibility that you have. And those decisions aren't always easy. So, my two items that I'd like us to look at is, one is looking at a possible regulatory fee to increase the amount of money that comes to the city so that we can police. Or number two is we could still do the regulatory fee, but take it to a vote and see if the residents want to continue TNT or safe and sane fireworks or if they would like to ban it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now, let's go to Mayor Pro Tem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are great suggestions, by the way, I think they're, I couldn't have said it better myself. But we do, you know, we do have an issue here. The problem is, is that now there's an expectation, I think we wouldn't be having this conversation if the funds for the nonprofits weren't tied to fireworks, right? I think it's a, you know, it'd be a different discussion, it'd be a different argument. I personally, you know, having grown up here, do remember when fireworks, there weren't many illegal fireworks, there weren't many unpermitted fireworks, it was just, you know, the Piccolo Pete's, it was the ones that spin and that was it. And the sparklers or whatever it was. Now, you see fireworks that, and they compete against some of the fireworks at Disneyland. I mean, they're kind of scary because you see them going off everywhere. And I want to say, you know, to the chief's credit and to the department's credit, I saw patrol cars speeding around through smoke, through neighborhoods, and it was alarming because I hadn't seen it that out of control in years and having lived here almost all my life and having seen those. And we enjoy having fireworks, like I think some of the speakers said, it's a fun thing to have your kids, and I've got, you know, young kids who like to buy their box of fireworks and we set them off on the patio, but it is scary when we take them out and we're going to go get something to eat and you're driving through smoke and you're seeing patrol cars just race by you. And that's disturbing and that's unsettling. And, you know, we do have pets in this community, we do have elderly folks and that's something that we have to make sure that we consider. The problem is, is that I don't think the legal fireworks are the issue, that's not really the problem. The problem is that the unpermitted, illegal ones are purchased and activated under the guise of the legal ones. So, you see those going off. So, my, you know, my concern is for that and I believe that, I could agree with the council member's recommendation to go to the voters, but the problem is, is that when we go to the voters, it's very difficult to unwind that. Once it's done, it's a settled issue and we can't revisit it. It's very difficult to amend, even though we can make some adjustments, we can't take it down again. And that takes away the flexibility of this body and the public. We'd have to go back to the public and go back to the voters. What I was going to suggest is the first alternative that the council member mentioned, which was considering doing what we do with other issues. When there's an increased cost for enforcement, and I saw the matrix here and I believe it's close to $70,000 for additional enforcement for that night or that period of time, if there's a way, Madam City Attorney, that we could include that regulatory fee, either we impose it on the seller or the end user, some way to use that to create a fund for enforcement for that specific period of time, maybe we do that. And maybe that could be on a pilot basis, maybe that's something that we revisit next year and see if we had success or we revisit it in 2018 if we impose it in 17. The other thing was the disposal of illegal fireworks at $75,000 that the county is going to impose on us or the state is imposing on us because now they consider that waste toxic. I don't know if that's true or not, but I think it's something that we need to research and see if that is the fact because I think when the mayor and I were talking about it, I think we don't know what the, you know, whether that disposal is treated, you know, what maybe the factors are for that. But I really do believe that, you know, we need to try one before the other because there's now an expectation by the nonprofits that they have this as a funding source and to completely take it away, whether it's by a vote or whether it's by a ban, is probably not the best answer. The best answer is to try to solve the problem, which is the chaos that's created by the unpermitted and illegal fireworks. And we can only do that if we give resources to the department to be able to offset that and make sure that they ramp up with additional staffing, with additional, I don't know, units and patrol cars and education. And look, the education is out there. I think it's, I think it's something that we need to do better, but we have to come at it from all angles. But I'd make that suggestion, Mr. Mayor, that we look at a pilot program in assessing and creating a fund for enforcement. And then if, you know, if we revisit it and realize that's not working, then we can always consider the ballot initiative option as well.
Thank you for that comment. Let me make a few comments and then I'll probably go back to the chair of the committee for suggestions or if not, you know, we can always consider other motions. I just want to, you know, state that I think it is a big net positive, a net gain to have fireworks in this city. To me, it's not just the nonprofits, and I'll speak more about that in a moment, but it's also the community at large. So many of us have memories, positive memories of being out there with family, with kids, a tradition, you know, with your neighbors, as a community, doing something very special and very positive, you know, very traditional, very American, and at the same time, for the nonprofits, a unique opportunity. You know, we heard about the tale of two cities, we heard about, you know, how hard it is to raise money. I'll tell you, ask any nonprofit, they're doing everything they can to raise money, everything they can. If we were to take this away from them, this fallacy, and I call it a fallacy, of winning off and of somehow having some substitute, there is not going to be a substitute. They'll just have less money to do what they do year in and year out because frankly, this is a windfall. This is a windfall. It's an opportunity for these nonprofits to work the booth real hard. And I know because I've, you know, been friends with many of these nonprofits over the years, I see how they do, and it is a windfall. They look forward to it all year long because no matter what the organization is, whether it's, you know, Santa Ana High School or the Boys and Girl Scouts, whomever it might be, they have a booth, 15, 25,000, even more money is going to be raised over a very short period of time. And that goes to pay for uniforms, to pay for trips, you know, to pay for coaching, for activities, money that we're never going to make up. And the number of nonprofits is very, very large, but the number of people in the city that benefit and enjoy the Fourth of July is even larger. I think if we were to put this on the ballot, it'll pass. Not the ban, the, you know, keeping the fireworks will pass because people will be supportive of it. I'm not saying it's going to be 100%, some will say, no, let's ban them, but the vast majority, this is a young city with a lot of kids, with a lot of families that participate in this, they're going to vote to keep the fireworks. So, what I think we should do is look at how we can improve it. How can we make that, because it's really one night that we're talking about, how can we make that one night, you know, not as difficult as it is right now, but realize that we're having a bunch of good nights? If we were to take all this money away from the nonprofits, all the work that they do throughout the year wouldn't be here and the city would be a worse city for it. All the good work that they do would be taken away. So, what we need to do is figure out, how can we work to make that one night better? One of the things I heard from Mr. Kelly was that, you know, there's a new app and I really believe in technology. I think technology is changing the world. It's changing everything, you know, education, you know, business, you know, social interactions, everything. Well, why can't we use that app that Mr. Kelly spoke about and understand better how we can reach out and use each other to patrol, you know, those that are the perpetrators, the, you know, the guys that are, you know, taking advantage and doing the Disneyland fireworks in the middle of a street? You know, that's unhealthy and I think we can use technology to get us there. Also, the magnitude of the dollars that we're talking about, if it's $75,000 to have extra overtime and more officers that night, I'd be interested in sitting down with the industry and figuring out, can we do something to augment efforts to address that and not take away? And I don't know the exact number, but what I would like to do is I would like the nonprofits to report back to the city, just so we have an idea of how much money we're talking about because I think it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not greater than that, it could be, it could be over a million dollars if you add up all the nonprofits and all the money that they make. Look, with four of them, you could have $100,000. And I think, Ms. City Manager, somebody, could somebody help me, how many booths do we have currently under the program? Do we have a number?
Roughly 80, I think between 75 and 80.
75 and 80, so, look, you pick a number, but we're talking about millions of dollars that we'd be taking away really from the children of this community because that's where most of these nonprofits are at. They're really assisting the children of the city by and large. And so, I would, again, think that this, you know, nonprofit issue is huge, but the families and the fabric of the city is even bigger. And look, we've taken on campaigns before and if we have a strong campaign on this, I know that, and I believe we can do better. And so, I would invite, you know, maybe a motion from the chair of the committee because he has spent so much time in this area and possibly something that I'm just going to suggest, it says maybe we, you know, table this for a period of time. Those of us that are interested, and I'd be willing to sign up for that effort, maybe meet in unison with the industry and try to figure out what are the dollars that would make sense in terms of the enforcement side? And then work more with the nonprofits so that they can also be educating people about, you know, this app and other methods that maybe could be used on assisting the community enforcement at large. And, you know, let's, you know, try to have a safe and sane Fourth of July, this Fourth of July.
I'm going to ask that we
Please.
That we make a motion, I'm looking at the calendar here, July 4th this year is on a Monday, so that means we're going to meet on the 5th, the day right after the Fourth of July. I would make a motion that we hold off until July 5th to have a discussion. Ms. City Attorney, if I'm not mistaken, when is the very last drop, when is the last date for us to be able to put something on the ballot?
It's going to be 88 days before the election, but our county is going to impose earlier dates, so those two dates are really going to coincide. You're probably talking, I've calculated this before, your second meeting in July.
Second meeting of July, so maybe what we do is we can
But I'm told that you
June or July?
That you don't have a second meeting in July currently scheduled. Your city manager reminded me of that.
We could have a special meeting if need be.
That is true.
If need be. But why don't I defer to the chair?
Oh, no, but I wanted to talk about our chair. See, Mr. Mayor?
You're going there, you're going there, all right.
No, I wanted to say, first and foremost, I really tip my hat to our chair because it wasn't easy to bring this up and take it out of the committee and bring it out here to the city council meeting. But I do agree, I still think we can, we can start working on some possibilities, right? On some ordinances or possibilities and bring it back on July 5th. And if we have to take a second meeting, we could always do that, I think we'd be up for that. But I want to thank our chair for bringing it up and really allowing all sides to be heard tonight on this because it really, we had a good dialogue tonight.
Thank you. Any others?
My motion, though, do I get a second? Can we hold, I made a motion to hold it off.
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion is to hold off until July 5th, re-agendize it July 5th to see how things go on July 4th and it'll be fresh in our minds as well at that point.
I have some additional thoughts, but I'll go ahead and second, but I think that there are some other additional comments and then come back and make some comment.
You want to amend your motion? He'll second it with amendments to come.
But I think Mayor Pro Tem had some
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Just real briefly, I think I can support that.
Just real briefly, I think, I can support that. I understand that that's probably the safe thing to do, but this is the problem, is that we're passing the buck on this again. We're not addressing the underlying problem. It's going to come back to us, and we're giving a false expectation to nonprofits that rely on this. And as everybody spoke, this is their life, this is part of their lifeblood. So if we really want to keep them healthy, we want to keep them strong, we want to continue having a consistent funding resource for them, we should address the underlying problem. And the problem is, is that our department doesn't have resources to address the secondary impacts from these things. And all it's going to do is it's going to get residents that are angry already, angry at the nonprofits. So we're just passing the buck and laying it at their feet again. And that's something that I would prefer us not to do, because we're vested with the right to make difficult decisions. And when we push it down and we kick the can, I don't think that's a real responsible thing to do. I think the best thing to do is if we realize how valuable the nonprofits are to our community, let's be honest and let's say, we've got a way to fund an additional increment of monies that will augment the enforcement efforts. We do that with other areas. We realize that when we approved and adopted Measure BB, we knew that there was going to be an enforcement issue, and we directed those funds and allocated those revenues to enforcement. We can do that here as well. And I don't think there's anything wrong. If anything, what we're doing is we're supporting, we're fortifying our nonprofits, showing that we want them to continue to survive and for there to be a safer environment for those kids. The same kids that we're trying to protect by having nonprofits have a funding source are the same kids we should protect from illegal fireworks that could harm somebody. One day, somebody's going to get very harmed by these illegal fireworks. Someday, somebody's going to get hurt, and we're going to come back and say, we should have done increased enforcement, because we're on notice. It's already happened, you know, and the Chief, I think, delineated that, and he gave us examples of what happened with fires and what happened with, you know, fireworks hitting fire trucks and patrol cars. So it's going to happen sooner or later, and when a parent comes before us and says, why didn't you address it when you had the opportunity? That's when I think we're going to have to face the reality. But I understand that, you know, we should, you know, try to do something, but, look, I don't think that this is the best responsible way to do it, because it isn't, it really isn't addressing the underlying problem.
All right.
Mayor, quick question.
Please, go ahead.
How much would it, money are we talking about in terms of additional enforcement? How much would that cost?
Seventy-five.
And just seventy-five? I mean, that's just to cover the cost of disposing the illegal fireworks-
No, no, I think we're talking about overtime.
Is that overtime?
No, we already put thirty-four officers out on overtime. I don't believe that's the exact number, but we could get that to the Council. The seventy-five thousand is just if the county were to pass on that cost.
Pass on the cost, right.
Yes, but in terms of the exact numbers, we could provide you with plenty of time before you revisit this issue.
Would an option be to hire additional, you know, maybe from the county Sheriff's Department officers?
We always could try to contract with them and pay for their services, and then, of course, Fourth of July is a holiday, so I don't, they are a big agency, so perhaps they can give us some assistance. I don't know, but we can explore that for sure.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Any thoughts from the segment?
I've got a couple of thoughts.
Well, I do have, I do have a couple of thoughts, too. Basically, what we did here is both sides, with very compelling arguments and positions, and both had, there is reason for their, for what they presented, and both those that are in favor of a ban, those that are pleading with us to not discontinue safe and sane fireworks, both for the experience within the community, but then also the benefits of the, to the nonprofits. But what we did here, and I think we're all in agreement, and some of the members of the Council mentioned, that this last year was, it was more, it was a greater problem than it has been in years past. So I think we do need to figure out how to address that. And that's, I think, to Councilman Sarmiento's point and some of the other comments that were made here. So what I would like to add, and some of the comments is-
So you got to listen, here's the amendment.
Is, I would agree, let's look at, you know, as soon as we can after the July 4th holiday to see and assess where things are, but in order for us to be able to adequately assess, we can't just go status quo. We really need to make this a top priority. And to some of the comments that other Councilmembers made, we have had campaigns, we, at one point, had a major problem within the city on guns fired in the air for years, illegal discharging of firearms. We made that a top priority to address that as a city, with communications, with enforcement. We have that option to look at that, and maybe other resources. We can say this is one of our top safety priorities between now and July 4th, and whether it be PSAs, whether it be raising our fees, communicating that there is potential jail time, really putting the fear in some of those folks that are having, causing this fear throughout the community, and getting serious behind it, looking at these other options of increased enforcement, looking at other means by which we can get, gain resources, these regulatory fees. So what I'm saying, I'm putting these, making these comments, so what I would like to add is that we don't just come back after the July 4th holiday, but within the next forty-five days, potentially sixty days, we come up with a plan on how we're going to do things different in a more robust way, both in education, in enforcement, in fines, so that we do things in a, there's more of a comprehensive plan to that, so that there is a, there's something that we can follow through on. So essentially adding a plan within the next forty-five days to be able to increase all of our, both education and enforcement, and try to identify ways that we can bring in some of those fees, and that regulatory fee, whether it be, again, the provider of the fireworks or end user, somehow figuring out that, figuring out how we can bring in those additional resources, so.
Let me, if I may, so those were comments, and I believe a friendly amendment to the motion, but let me try to add something as well that I think could work. Instead of kind of, you know, planning, watching, waiting, and then assessing what kind of a Fourth of July that we have on the 5th, I'd like to appoint an ad hoc committee that would basically do three things. One, I'd like to meet with the industry, you know, see what maybe has occurred in other cities, we're not the first cities that's discussing this, and maybe there is some voluntary contribution or something they could do to help with these efforts. And we could do that now. Also, I'd like to try to bring all eighty-five or however many nonprofits are in town, just leaders, we don't need everybody in them, because I know there's, you know, tens of thousands of people, but just the leaders, and through some mechanism, try to assess, you know, what the benefit is, how hard they work, how much money they make, and what they do with that money, because right now, we don't really have a good control of that. And then, thirdly, I'd like to work with neighborhoods and those that are concerned to figure out, you know, can we use some of these apps? Is there anything going on in any other city in America which is a good idea that we should be implementing here? And try to do that now. Don't kick the can, don't, you know, wait till the 5th of July to say, how did we do? But let's roll up our sleeves right now, go out there and be as proactive as we can, and then let's figure out how well we did, but, you know, based on our efforts now. So, you know, again, I think, you know, if folks are willing to do that, I'd be happy to serve on this ad hoc committee. I'd suggest possibly the, you know, Chair of Public Safety, because you're very, very active, and then I'd ask the rest of the Council, who wants to put in the time on this? And, you know, we'll have some meetings, be meetings with the industry, meetings with the nonprofits, meetings with the community, trying to come up with whatever we can between now and the Fourth of July. And then when we're here on the 5th, we will have made an effort, not just kicked the can, but, you know, done the best we can between now and then. So that's not necessarily an amendment to the motion, just something I'm putting on the table. And if, are you willing to serve on this effort, Mr. Chair? So I got a sure. What I do is I will open up to the rest of the Council, whoever else wants to be on this committee. We can only have three, because it's an ad hoc. Well, no, no, I'm talking about Councilmembers. We'll meet with you as well, and I know you'll all be there, but I'm talking Councilmembers. So, look, just later, if anybody else wants to serve on this ad hoc, you know, please let me know, and I'll make sure we don't violate the Brown Act, and we'll work with the City Attorney and the City Clerk and everything else. But I think we don't just have to be victims. We don't just have to sit back and say, you know, how did it go? Let's drive for a good Fourth of July. So with that, we have a motion, a second, with some amendments, and an offer to anybody that wants to serve. Yes?
I didn't, I didn't see any acceptance of the amendments, so we do have a motion on the floor with the first and the second.
Well, the amendment is what you stated. Can you make it a little shorter?
A comprehensive plan on enforcement, on education, so that we do things in a more robust way when it comes versus what we did last year, so when we-
And that would come to us on the 5th of July?
No, 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 within the next forty-five days.
So that could be part of what the ad hocs working on?
Basically, you just repeated in another way what I had just said.
All right.
What you just said.
So we'll have an ad hoc committee, we'll work on this, and then we'll follow what you said about the 5th of July.
Creating an ad hoc to work on this, basically, would be the amendment to your-
So, so that's a complete, I'm just trying to, so we're going to work on something within the next forty-five days? Is that what it is?
So it could be this simple. So review, your motion was, let's review this July 5th. And what I, my amendment would be, just to add on, let's put together an ad hoc to work on an education enforcement plan.
Be with the community, the nonprofits.
First of all, we don't want the ad hoc to be part of a motion or a vote.
Okay.
I'll make that separate.
Okay, so make that separate, if you want to keep the ad hoc out. I think the difference that I'm hearing in the first motion is kind of defer action and wait. The amendment is sounding like it's direction to staff to come up with a plan and maybe allocate resources.
Correct.
Very different.
And that's the addition, right, to-
So I want to make it very clear, does the police chief have that budgeted now for the overtime officers in your budget for this fiscal year?
No, that's only nothing budgeted.
And so if that is not the case, does that mean that the City Council is going to make an amendment to provide the funding for the July, for, so that they can make the enforcement? So again, money, we need the money to do so. So again, let's be very specific in what we're asking staff to do. They cannot do it without an amendment for funding, so let's be very clear.
Ms. City Attorney, can I ask you a question? If we were to, can we impose a regulatory fee right now to increase revenue so that we have money to police this, you know, the days leading up to the Fourth of July and so forth? Can we impose a regulatory fee on the firework apparatus?
So I'm going to say, yes, you have the authority to impose a regulatory fee. There's a case on point called the Sinclair Paint case. It says that where you can actually identify impacts, you can come up with a fee to offset it. How you would impose that fee, whether it would be on the sale of every item, whether it would be on the company that's bringing in the place that they sell it from, you know, the little kiosk place that they sell, we would have to work on that.
Let me call on Mayor Pro Tem, and then I have a suggestion.
But we would need to work on it. We'd need to get, you know, a team together.
And that's something the committee could do. Please, go ahead.
So that's something that we could bring onto the next meeting.
Correct.
Because we don't have to wait. So my recommendation is going to be this, let's go ahead and bring it back with language on how we could impose a regulatory fee, what the regulatory fee would be at this next meeting for this upcoming year.
Can we do it on the first meeting in May?
Sure, sure. Is that okay? That's my motion.
I'll second that motion. Well, you already had a second. What about your original motion? You're withdrawing your original motion?
I'm withdrawing my original motion. So that's my, that's my motion.
So your motion is bring this back in, first meeting in May with the original fee, so there's no, that is the extent of the motion.
Can I make a friendly amendment and provide a second option, just in case we are not supportive, if you don't have the votes to, you know, do the regulatory fee, that we will make an amendment to the budget to provide our law enforcement the funds necessary to deal with the illegal fireworks. It may be in the tune of $150,000 or so. I'm going to assume that, but I think Chief Rojas is going to have to get those calculations to us.
Wouldn't it be in the next budget year, because it's after July 1?
Thank you so much. The budget's going to be presented April, actually, the next meeting, there'll be a budget proposal with additional resources for the Police Department. How we use those is up to the Police Department, but we're going to consult with the Council, of course. I think what we're talking about today is saying there's a seventy-five to $100,000 enforcement need, and we're trying to find the money to pay for that, not just deal with the budget, because the budget's not-
And if I may, let me get the meeting back here at the center. We have basically a motion, a second. What I would suggest is, look, Councilor Benavides and I will just act as this ad hoc committee, we'll address several of these issues. As we have findings, we'll bring them back to the Council, and that'll just happen in parallel to what's been suggested. So we have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So now, what's the next topic, Madam City Clerk? Seventy-five B. And we're going to work with a nonprofit, so you can clap now, but, you know, we're going to be working with you and give you more reason to clap. So let's work together on this. Going to make this a better, a better city.
I'm going to be recusing myself from this item, Sir Mayor, it addresses CDBG, grants, and-
All right, so please note for the record, he works with Kid Works, and this is about block grants, he doesn't want a conflict, so my co-chair on the ad hoc committee is going to recuse himself. He's already leaving, we haven't even started work. No, I'm kidding, it's a different topic. So with that, this is time and place for the public hearing on the block grant fiscal program. Do we have any members of the public that wish to address this, Madam City Clerk?
I have not received any.
All right, so let me, just for the record, I'm going to open up the, I'm going to open up the public hearing, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for a Council consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and move the item, I'm just wanting to make sure as we move forward, we're going with the second year with the organizations that we have picked, and I saw that there were some assessments based on some of their outcomes. Some folks were able to fulfill, you know, some of their outcomes, some were not, and they're in the process. You know, our goal when we first initiated this process in bringing back nonprofits is that we wanted to make sure that there was going to be an investment back into our community, and assuring that it was tied to our strategic plan. And so I'm just hopeful that our staff will continue to monitor, and next year, you know, we decided for two years, but next year, we're going to go out for a new process. I'm hoping that that's-
What I was going to ask, would you consider a continuance so that we can-
Oh, you want to continue?
Yeah, so we can get into the detail of it.
I don't think we have, Mayor, this is, this was voted on, the two-year extension on the, on these-
So this is not-
You guys already decided that?
Yeah, we already made that decision.
I think what the Councilman was saying, we're going to monitor-
We're going to monitor, but-
And the understanding is that after the second year, we're going to open it up.
We're going to open it back up, and so this went through the-
All right.
The financial-
So that's fine. So we're good then?
Yeah, I just want to-
So that's a motion, is there a second? I need a second from the left.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, are we almost done? ADA, this is a joint session of the City Council, the Housing Authority. I would consider a resolution on Item 1 and 2.
I'll move it with comment, and I'll wait for a second.
I'll second, I'll second, go ahead, comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is, my understanding, Mr. City Attorney, for the, discussing the issue that we have with the MPS, right, for the Centennial Park Offset for parklands there, and the only comment I had was that these properties were acquired originally with home funds, and so normally, these funds would, or these properties, I guess, could be sold, and the proceeds could be used for affordable housing. That not being the case here, these properties are going to be used to comply with the requirements, I guess, that the MPS had put before us, so we could maintain the Rancho Santiago campus, satellite campus at Centennial, and we comply with our property requirements.
I think, Mayor- I think, Mayor Pro Tem, that the funds are being purchased, and the money's going back for housing, and the funds will then be used for other housing projects. Can you clarify that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And, Mr. City Manager, a hundred percent of the, the funds from the sale of these properties will go, go to the development of affordable housing in compliance with the law.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
With that, I think there's a motion and a second, Mr. Mayor. That's the only comment I had.
All right, with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And Madam City Clerk, I believe that takes us to item, is it eighty-five A? So I would turn to Mayor Pro Tem or Councilor Martinez, whoever wants to introduce this item.
I'll defer to the council member.
She'll defer to somebody else.
Yeah, I'll defer to the chairman of the public safety, and then I'll make comments.
All right, all right. Sorry, let, let me, a couple of folks that wish to speak on this. Aya Tasgulyn, you want, you want to talk on this? It's eighty-five A. And then Abraham Medina after that.
Mayor, may I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you one quick time. I just realized that we did not do a closed session report, and we did have reportable action, so I want to make sure we get on record.
I asked you if you had any comments, and you were not in the room.
Okay, I must have...
Let's do it right now, go.
We usually do it in the beginning, it wasn't our agenda.
Go.
We did have, we do have approval on a seven oh vote for a global settlement for acquisition in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars with a stipulation for possession of real property by June thirtieth. That's the Bristol property matter. That was a seven zero vote. With a five oh vote, with our council member Martinez being absent, and Mayor Pulido excusing himself, the council voted to file a, a action against Caribou Industries to resolve an encroachment issue. That's all the reportable action I have.
And by the way, for the record, that time came out of Aya's allotted time.
I, I cover a lot of time, but I'm not allowed to speak.
No, 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 you can start again. Let's give him three minutes. That was a joke. That was a joke. Please go ahead, please go ahead. Speak into the mic, though.
Okay.
No, no, into the mic, there you go.
I hope it's not from my expense of the time.
It's not your expense, but just start.
Good evening, Mayor Pulida, Santa Ana...
Pulido, you always call me Pulida.
Okay, another two seconds.
We'll start over, start the clock over.
No, 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 please, let me talk. But before I want to start to talk, I want to ask you if it would be my speech not for the expense of public speech, comment? I, I will, I will still have public comment?
Please.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I want to talk about item eighty-five, discussion relatives to community engagement and partnership for safety and greater prosperity. And community safety and greater prosperity and partnership engagement can go together with, with justice. First of all, I want have, I, I want to have a, I want to commence the Santa Ana Police Department, especially Chief of the Department. When I criticize Police Department, I do not have a intention to say no truth, but I'm glad that I have the, have the reason to support the work Police Department because the Police Department and have some very honest, good people who actually a lot changed in relationship to my family and in the direction of fairness. Especially, I want to talk about Santa Ana Police Department, such great officer as a Serma, Sarabia, Raya, Andrade, and of course, Chief of Police Department, Rojas. However, I'm asking the city and Police Department to be fair with my son Nate and my family, and asking to release the police report sixteen dash zero seven five forty-four and fifteen dash thirty-one eight seven eight, which I believe accurately collected the data of neglect, assault, abuse of my son in the group home under supervision of Orange County Regional Center. And they are really courageous people, they, the Police Department, one of the, one of the first of the public department are going to the, on the family site.
Thank you, Aya, you can start winding up.
Very glad to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Aya. Abraham Medina?
I'm here to share a little bit about, on item eighty-five A, and having to do with, with the three-pronged approach to enhance community safety, including enforcement, prevention, and education. I believe that in order to have addressed community safety, we need a citywide initiative towards violence reduction strategies, and I think we need a strong collaborative. We need a strong and robust, robust infrastructure of prevention, intervention, and reentry. And I believe we could all collaborate and partner to come up with proactive solutions. And it is important that if we do have prevention, that there's a way to also evaluate the way that we use these funds and evaluate these programs. I want to quote from the HuffPost, an article written by Dr. Ross, and it says, "New research tells us that childhood trauma is a top predictor of misbehavior leading to school suspensions and the number-two predictor of academic failure." It is also, it also predicts abuse of substances and other risky behavior that can lead to even greater trouble down the road. In fact, we know that more than ninety percent of young people in the juvenile justice system have experienced, experienced childhood trauma. And so we can't just have any program or any type of prevention. This prevention has to be trauma-informed and culturally informed. We also have to make sure that any efforts that we, we, we make are strategic and based in a collaborative effort. But also, it could also be, you know, the question could also, how, how could we make sure that maybe some of these new spaces like ADA or some of these funds from the self-proparty are going to fund this infrastructure that we so desperately need? Thank you.
Thank you, Abraham. And I'll bring it back to the council now. I think those were the last speakers. And we're on council item eighty-five A, and that is council member Benavides. I'll go ahead and give you the floor so you can start, start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Ultimately, what we have before us, and myself and a couple of the members of, of council wanted to bring before the, the rest of the council is, is discussion relative to community engagement, a safer community as a whole. We have been witnessing and hearing about a lot of issues that, that are brought reason for concern, both on the council, members of the community, the gang activity and such over the last couple of months. However, at the same time, oftentimes what doesn't get as much attention is all of the proactive work that the city does and has been doing with, and working with our nonprofits, and working with the faith community, and also the proactive efforts of, of law enforcement and the police department. So what we wanted to do is, is make sure to have an opportunity to have a, a space to be able to discuss and ultimately give some, some direction to, overall direction to, to the city staff. As we look at, City Manager mentioned that in a couple of weeks, we will be hearing the first draft of, of the budget, getting, having some discussion around that. Wanted to make sure that we have the opportunity to be able to speak into, into that before. The, there's, the faith community, one example, faith community has been coming together and in response to some of the, the issues of concern out in the community have been discussing the idea of coming together for, for various events. And one of those, as a, for, to gather for a unity walk and, and rally. And they've been contacting a number of us on the council to be able to ask whether the city would be cooperative and helpful. And I think that's one of the things that we want to be able to present today, is to ask for our staff to intentionally be, work in partnership and in support of these types of efforts, to be able to again, counter the, the challenges in the community by, by working together and building that, that greater sense of unity within the community. When it comes to the other opportunities, when it comes to prevention, for example, the, continuing to work with the, the nonprofits, the community groups, we've discussed some of the importance of, of those groups in our previous discussion, one of the previous items. One of the other, want to ask the staff to look at any ways that we can continue to enhance those types of partnerships, those types of, of prevention efforts. There was mention earlier as well about some of the recreation programs from years past. And over the years, with, with less resources, some of those have been scaled back. Want to look at what we can do as a city in our Parks and Recreation Department to be more intentional about building some of those programs and, and opportunities for, for our young people. When it comes to, to safety as well, the, the, we also heard about some of the, the challenges that our law enforcement has, looking at ways that we can have, provide the resources that our police department needs to be able to go out and take these enforcement actions, but also build stronger relations with the community as well, is, is something that is key for us to be intentional on. And, and then one of the other things that we did, it isn't, it isn't quite mentioned here, but in the area of creating jobs and economic development, we did have, have some members of the business community come and speak before us in the last couple of meetings. Reality is that as businesses are supported, more jobs are created, and, and there's a quote that, that has stuck with me from the first time I, I heard it, through Homeboy Industries and Father Greg Boyle out in LA, who does a lot of intervention work with, with men and, and women who have found themselves in the justice system and are, are looking at reentry opportunities to, to, after having been released. And that, that line is, nothing stops a bullet like a job. And essentially, anything that we can do to be able to work with our business community and, and create those jobs so that our, our young people have, have that second chance. You know, it's going to be something that's critical, and at the end of the day, will, will provide significant dividends and benefits to our community so we can actually see some of these spikes decrease, and so we can have a healthier and safer community. So just a, a general backdrop that I wanted to, to lay out and, and have some of my colleagues speak to some of their, some of their ideas as well that they might have to present. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Benavides. And I'm glad that we're discussing this item, and, you know, I don't want to take away what our police department has done to combat, you know, the issues that we are dealing with right now as it pertains to the gang shootings and, and the high incidence of, of crime that we've had, especially with the limited resources that they have and, and us not, you know, being able to hire officers as fast as we possibly can. You know, I think our chief is doing a, a, a great job with the, with the resources that he does have. But what I do want to state is that we are in a state of, of an emergency. And what is happening in our community should not be tolerated. But we have to understand that we're not going to find ourselves out of this problem just through suppression and enforcement. We have to be kidding ourselves, we can go ahead and allocate, you know, a million dollars to our law enforcement, and guess what? We're still not going to solve this problem. You know, the only way we're going to be able to solve this problem is through programs of reentry and prevention, you know? And I want to, to, to state the following, and I think what needs to happen so that Santa Ana can be successful, and, and we need to have a strategy. And so it's not just one of enforcement. And I think our, our, our police chief has, you know, provided and done what he has, what he possibly can to be combating what's happening on our streets. Definitely, do they need more resources? We need to identify those. And one example is, you know, does he need more help with the gang task force? And if so, we can't hire and he can't put other officers in that role, can we contract out possibly with the sheriff's department to have a specialty unit like their gang task force to help us out? Or can we have options to possibly declare, you know, a, a, a local emergency and trying to get resources from the state and federal government? Because what's happening here in our city every other day is very problematic. The great work that this city council has done as it pertains to wanting to change its image, what's happening in our downtown, all of that is going to go to the side because what people are reading every single day in the Orange County Register is a shooting in Santa Ana. Someone's gotten killed, over and over and over again. We have put a lot of effort in our police department and changing our image of what we're trying to do in a positive sense. So I don't want to take that away from the great work that we've done as a city. But we have a problem, ladies and gentlemen, and we need to nip that in the butt immediately. And it's not going to happen through suppression. So we either have to figure out a way to get outside resources, and how we do that is, I think, a discussion that we need to have if we don't have the resources here locally. Secondly, we have a lot of things that are going on, whether it be through the county, and they, they're having their own reentry program, a, a committee, how can we work with them? We have the Boys of Men of Color. We have the program Kinship that's in the Santa Ana High School District that are working on prevention and reentry. How can we continue to work and possibly through the city coordinate this inner, this interfaith, you know, commit, committee or commission or advisory, whatever we want to call it, but it has to be led by the city of Santa Ana? If we want to actually make change, we can't ask our faith-based community to, to go out and do that without not having the support of the city of Santa Ana and its resources. I then, too, want to talk about a specific program that has really changed Los Angeles and, and restrategizing of actually how do we provide resources and programs to make sure that we're focused on people and outcomes. And in the city of Los Angeles, and I think Chief Rojas is fully aware of the Summer Night, Summer Night Lights program, where it starts in July, and the Parks and Recreation, Parks and Rec Centers are open from six PM to midnight from July, from, from after July 4th through Labor Day. So we're not just only focusing during the day when we're addressing and working with young kids and the prevention, but we're actually having programs and resources for, you know, our residents all summer and all night long. The program has been successful in Los Angeles. It's been successful in other parts of the state. I think we need to look at a program like this, and I think Chief Rojas has the information on, on, on this specific program, and if not, I can go ahead and send that to our staff. But I think this, this community-based approach to changing how we provide parks and recreational and other services need to, to, to be changed into evening hours. And I'm hopeful that as we move forward, that we take, you know, this strategy of working with the folks that we currently have now that are doing great work, and how do we connect that with the city of Santa Ana? As you all recall, nine years ago, and if you don't recall, we had a, a, a gang prevention and intervention commission. Because of budgetary issues and matters, the city council decided to go away with that commission. It was a commission that I pushed nine years ago, and Councilmember Reyna is not here, but he talks about that, the cuts that we've made over the years. This, this, what's happening here didn't happen overnight. It's not, look, there may be some correlation with AB 109 and Proposition 47. We don't have the facts and data to back that up. But let me tell you, the cuts that we have made as it pertains to social programs... But let me tell you, the cuts that we have made as it pertains to social programs have had major impacts. And we're starting to see them. We all know, and I think our officers know, that from an early age, these gang members start to go after these young kids. And if they don't have different outlets, positive ones, they're going to turn to a life on the street that eventually, you know, and I'll be the first to admit, I don't know what that lifestyle is like today. I am very far removed from it. So I can't say that I can be in their shoes or I can be in our police officer's shoes that are observing this every single day. But what I can tell you is that we have the power on this city council to allocate resources to a strategy. And not just for one summer or for six months until we handle this, but we have to have a strategy that is a long-term one. My good friend, who's a mayor in Coachella, and it's on the Sun Times today, he talks about his mayor's strategy of how they've been able to combat gang violence these past two years and the initiatives that he's put together. And I just alluded to some of them that we currently have here in place already in Santa Ana. They had to work in the City of Coachella to build upon that. They brought in, you know, Father Boyle and asked for information about Homeboy Industries. We already have that set here with the kinship program with the blessing of Father Boyle. So we have things already happening with the Boys of Men of Color and the support of the California Endowment. We have the faith-based community. We just got to put the resources behind it and this city government behind it, not just continuing to wanting to put all our resources in suppression and enforcement. Because at the end of the day, we all know that's not going to solve the problem for Santa Ana. It doesn't mean that we can't put additional resources to help our police department to target this specific issue. But alone, suppression is not going to address this issue. And so I just want my colleagues to know that I think this is a serious issue that we need to address and it's timely as we're reviewing the budget. And if we really want to start to make change, we need to bring these organizations together, our school district, our faith-based community, and figure out a key, a really key strategic strategy that is going to move us in a direction, and it's not going to happen overnight, but it's going to happen within one to two to three years. I commend my colleague, Councilwoman Reyna, and Councilwoman Amesqua and our Councilmember Dinajero, as they've been working to do joint use with the school district. And that is, you know, 3:00 to 6:00 PM. But what I want to encourage is for us to expand our hours and look at the S and L program that is happening in Los Angeles and start thinking about doing 6:00 PM to midnight starting this summer. And really, I'll tell you that we will start to see change, but it has to be consistent and has to be, you know, predictable and it has to be steady. We cannot continue to say we're going to do this at this one point in time and then when things get better, we start to allocate our resources elsewhere. Because game, the game problem, and I think I see our chief and other police officers, they've been in their entire career, 25, 30 years that they've been here, they've been addressing gang violence ever since then and this day. Gangs are not going to go away. They are not going to go away. So we need to have a sustainable stream of funding to making sure that we're able to curtail as much as we possibly can. And it has to be through reentry, prevention and intervention, and of course, suppression. And thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I'll be brief. I just let my name to this and support it because it's a problem. It's, it's a problem that we thought maybe we saw kind of a blip on the radar when it was January and we saw a spike and then it was February, we saw a decline. But it's now a serious problem and silence is acquiescence when there's problems. And if we don't address it, if we don't speak to it, then we're contributing to that problem by not, by not speaking out. And so I want to thank School Board Member Amesqua for being here because she obviously cares about this issue like, you know, other community leaders like Ruben Alvarez and others who approached me and said, what is the council's position on this? And it's a problem in the community and how do you intend to address it? And I, I want to thank, you know, our chief of police, our city manager staff and all our staff because they all realize that this is a problem. And so I think that working together, I mean, basically all this 85A to me is we're asking you to help us have some options and some alternatives to address this problem that we all realize is serious. If we, you know, if we talk about our healthy economy and we have a, you know, a reserve of $45 million and we've avoided bankruptcy and we're in a much better place and all the good things that are happening in the city, that's in jeopardy if this bad press and this bad messaging get out there. And more than anything, it's just the danger to our residents and to our youth. And we just got through talking about how do we address one night of fireworks? You know, if we put this in perspective, this is a whole city that's in, in danger of, you know, getting out of control. I don't think that we need to declare a local emergency because as much as I think it could lend some resources, it could have some unintended consequences as well. You know, it could subject us to a label that's really difficult to dispel. And, and it also could lead to curfews and it could lead to different things that, you know, would make our business community struggle. And we get our funding for our, you know, our general fund from a lot of those businesses. And if they don't continue to do well, then we don't have the resources to police the city well. And I agree, it can't, we can't police our way out of this problem. It's not a matter of, you know, just enforcement. It has to be a comprehensive approach. So my ask or my request of staff and the chief is to sit down and to see if they can give us, see if you can give us a comprehensive approach that involves, you know, prevention, education and enforcement, something that I think we can do well. I think we can address this, but it's going to be a concerted effort. I think as you know, as our rank and file would tell us, you know, this gang problem isn't one that you solve, it's one that you manage. And we can manage it so long as we're working with partners. We can't do this to get, we can't do this alone and we can't burden the department and say, solve the problem. They need the support of the community. They need the support of the residents, the businesses. Everybody needs to work at this. And, you know, some of the things that I think, you know, we need to think about are just seeing what we can do to expand the police powers that the chief has, if any. If we need to contract out to supplement the force, if we need to revisit some of the parks that we have in the queue to maybe accelerate their opening, you know, looking at programs during the summer. A lot of the reasons why those programs weren't there and they went away, and I know we speak a lot about them, is because we had a budget deficit of $35 million. That was a structural budget deficit. Now we can look at maybe seeing some of the options, but, you know, a lot of things went away, not because we didn't think they were important, it's just we couldn't even pay our bills. So we had to lose employees and staff. So there were some very difficult decisions that were made. It's not because that, you know, programs for the youth weren't important, it's because solvency was, was more important, because not filing a Chapter Nine bankruptcy was important. So those things, I think, have to be mentioned in context. So let's all recall, we're only about three years removed from that very, very difficult time. In any event, I would just, you know, call upon you, Mr. City Manager, to work with, you know, with our police chief and anybody else and maybe your entire EMT staff, just to help us navigate this. We realize that it's a problem. We have to address it. And let's not be silent and let's, let's not be complicit in, in our inaction. Let's be active. Let's be, let's, let's, we understand our community and we know that our community responds when we provide the support, we provide the leadership and the resources. So that would be my compelling argument to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, what is the pleasure of the council? We just, so we, so that no further questions required?
Mayor, Mayor of City Council, we listen very carefully in the budget in two weeks. We'll reflect some of the priorities that were mentioned today and that'll start the process that will occur over several months. So there'll be lots of opportunities to, to refine the priorities for the city.
All right. And let me thank Mayor Protem and Councilman Martinez for bringing this forward. And we'll continue to work on this. So with that, let's go on to Madam Clerk. Where do we go? Are we down to public comment?
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority? All right. This is time and place for the meeting for the Housing Authority. I would entertain a motion for the consent counter, items one and two.
Sumoed.
We have motion of second. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number three, I believe we already considered three through five, is that correct? So with that, we're going to adjourn and come back. I think we have public comment. Ayah, come on down. I know you want to talk about public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Polida and Santa Ana City Council members. My name is Elliot Seglin. I am here as a voice of my innocent son Nate and public, a huge amount of public, especially disabled and their families. Nate has been torturing and poisoning to be killed by the neo-Nazis, which are employees of Orange County Regional Center and DDS, with assistance from corrupted probate judges, Lee, Kim, Hubbard, Mobberly and the rest of them. The grandparents of my son Nate survived Holocaust, but his grandson is going to be finished up here in Santa Ana when the corrupted public defender, such type as John Faldon, betraying his clients and justice. The Nazi Germans were minorities when came to power, but they prevailed over decent German majority. Because when the decent people do no, do nothing, justice fails and evil prevail. I do not know, I know that majority employees from public department are decent people and will not allow my innocent son Nate be destroyed for the sake of organized mafia from management of Orange County Regional Center DDS, corrupted probate judges, Lee, Hubbard, Mobberly, corrupted public defender, John Faldon, corrupted social services management with director, Soler. Nate is victim of a Orange County system of corruption and bribes, governmental organized crime where Orange County Regional Center and DDS orchestrated the unconstitutional, unlawful, criminal organized cooperation between judges, probate and juvenile court, such type as I mentioned before, Kim Hubbard and, and all of these probate judges and young generation of public defender perverts such as John Faldon. To how many other innocent people is this happening? I know to many that I am here, the voiceless of the many decent families who will destroy by this corrupted people. I am just, respect you and thank you for your time. If my time is finished, I don't want to take time.
Thank you. Robert. And then after that, Lupe Morfin, and then Ruben Alvarez, and then John Henry.
Hello, Honorable City Council, this is Robert Seglin, brother of Nate Seglin. As I've stated previously, my brother Nate Seglin has been illegally confined in the 903 South Harmon, Santa Ana group home, in which he's been enforced on drugs that are forbidden by his numerous psychologists, psychiatrists and so forth, because you're not supposed to take an autistic person illegally confined in a home. The Constitution doesn't allow that in addition to the fact that he's not supposed to be on drugs that are specifically, he's very sensitive to when it's causing him seizures. He had, he's reporting seizures and EPS and so forth. And I think it's in the interest of the Santa Ana Police Department or any other police department, well, police who come there to make sure that they make a full investigation and make sure that they would help the judges in the probate court at least have some material as to what's going on in the group home, whether he's being choked and whether he's being, having these seizures and the staff in the group home who say that, oh, he has anxiety and it's not true and everything like that. It would be in the interest of that to help that because now then you go before a judge, okay, the judge can ignore a lot of stuff, but if you have evidence, you have photographs, you have police reports now, that would encourage the judge to be worried because if, if, if they're going to continue this, he's going to be, end up dead very soon because they're having him on 2,000 milligrams of Depakote and so forth. So I think that in my brother's case, it would be very essential that the police reports would be already released. And then I would go to the judge, the judge would have more than enough evidence, 400 pages, more than enough, to make the decision to resolve it and have the conservatorship in the hands of what the probate code requires family members. So that would be the goal, number one goal. And then after, thereafter, then he can be placed in wherever outside of where he's supposed to be, just released from there. Because that's just, I mean, the staff choke him with impunity and so forth. And your law enforcement officers usually don't deal with this situation where a person is illegally confined. So they should, they're sort of, their hands are tied because, you know, you have an adult protective services who refuses to take him. So they're completely corrupt, but at least the police have the authority and the audacity to make investigation, at least write reports. And then the judge, judges have to act because they have to act outside of the normal realm because the social services and the regional center are the ones who are the criminals who are doing that. And the police have, have to deal with that by just writing reports and then the judge can make an order. And then, once you have an order, then you can enforce the Constitution and save his life and rescue him from this terrible situation.
Thank you. Lupe, please. Followed by Ruben.
I have, well, this will be my last visit on this subject. I have lived in this city since 1968. I was brought here as a 10-year-old child from Northern California where I was born. So I was raised in this city and I love this city. I was the only one of my four siblings that didn't get into drugs or gangs. And that happened because I love to read and I love the public library. And I love it so much that I hate what's happening to it. We have a lot of problems with the homeless and nobody seems to be doing anything about it. And so I worry and I worry. And I thought, well, government will take care of it and government will take care of it. And government doesn't seem to be taking care of it. And so I've been praying, I've come, this is my third time, and all of a sudden it just came to me. What we need is, they've turned the Civic Center into like a third world country. So what we need is God. We need Christian groups, maybe the Catholic Church, maybe some of the big Christian churches that are in this county that care about third world countries to come into our Civic Center and talk to these people. Christian groups that love people, that are willing to talk to them. Because I know something, sometimes some of these young people don't get talked about God and about Jesus Christ until they're in prison. And that's not good. I know, because I have brothers that have gone to prison and they found Jesus there. And so I'm hoping that some of you will go talk to the, the communities, the churches, and ask them to come and talk to these people. We got to get them out of there. There's no hope there. I've seen them. I've seen them sitting out there and there's no hope. We got to find something for them. So anyway, that's, that's my piece. And I'll come talk to you about something else that bothers me next time. Anyway, God bless you all.
Thank you, Ruben. Followed by John Henry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In the last three hours that we're here, saw a shooting on Bristol and Wilshire. Okay? That's how serious this stuff is getting. I mean, it's, it's all the time. And I want to thank Michelle and Vince and Roman and also Sal, because I got to talk to them personally about this. And I asked to speak after. And I asked to speak after you did your deliberation because I wanted to hear what you guys were thinking and what you guys are doing. And I'm going to say my speech because there's probably a lot of people that don't know me here in the audience, much less on TV world. But my name is Ruben Alvarez. I'm a long-life resident of San Ana. You know me as the Stay Connected guy. I'm a publisher, electronic publisher media that goes out to 20,000 people every single week. Tonight, I come to you as a community leader and concerned citizen. Lou Correia was here a little while ago and he said, "Stop and help." Well, what kind of leader am I if I can't stop and help? And this is what I'm doing. Because I had dedicated at one point my life to youth leadership development. For over 50 years, my family and I have been involved here in this community. We've helped almost each one of you get elected as well. I spent some time at the Boys and Girls Clubs for 12 years, actually. And I was also on the Parks and Rec Board and the library. And I don't say these things to brag, but just to give people a point of reference that I know what I'm talking about. The team program that we had was so successful that even you that were there, Miguel, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, when President Clinton came here and honored the Boys and Girls Club for our top leadership program for teenagers. That's the level we were at. And I've been trained in all of the leadership development stuff. And what I wanted to make sure that the residents and the people in leadership here in our city know is that if we don't do something about the prevention, and almost all of you are touched by prevention programs, if not a teacher in schools, Michelle's a product of the Boys and Girls Club as well, that we're going to be in serious trouble. And City Manager, I mean, I'm willing to give my expertise at any time you need it as well. But we need those clubs, those Parks and Rec centers, the Y, the kids' work. We need them open late in the evenings because the kids have nowhere to go. And we always, oh, well, it's only till 5 o'clock. Well, you know what? The kids are up there till 9:00 or 10:00, 11:00 unsupervised, right? We know that. And the more centers, the more activities that we could produce for them, the better our city's going to be. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruben. Thank you for coming down. Thank you for your words. John Henry, please.
So it's John Henry.
Sorry, sorry.
My training's a little challenged.
What did you get in penmanship?
So I was a draftsman in high school. That was a few years ago. So the high school I went to was Saddleback High School.
Got it.
So see if I can put a bookend around tonight because am I the last speaker?
You're the last speaker.
So I grew up in Santa Ana. I'm a pride of Santa Ana. Born in '62, went all the way through high school. And then I went to UCI. And then I left. And I came back. And so I'm here again, working with Saddleback High School only because somebody, I work at Boeing. And I worked at Boeing for almost 30 years. So that's been my vocation. So I'm flipping the coin now to my avocation, which is youth. And I've worked with Boy Scouts and soccer. I know Santa Ana Soccer Club. I work with them as well. I've started soccer clubs in South County. I've been working with youth soccer and youth sports for almost 20 years. In the past 10 years or so, I've been working with Boy Scouts. And I've developed a youth leadership program within the Boy Scouts. And about a year ago, I got a bonus from Boeing. And I didn't think I did anything different than I've been doing for the last 20-something years. I've always done a great job there and made the company a lot of money, but I didn't feel like it was mine. So I went home and I talked to my wife Mindy. And I said, "I'd like to give this money to somebody." And I ended up thinking about it and praying on it, like Lupe was talking about. And I decided to give it to Saddleback. So I love football. Okay, I grew up with football. The football program came and talked to you today about the Pop Warner football. I grew up in Santa Ana, Pop Warner football. A lot of what I've learned about leadership is from football. And so I entered into the school through Saddleback High School's football program. I'm the booster club president. And there wasn't the booster club. So I started from scratch. That has grown now because Principal Postamani at Saddleback High School is really welcoming help and support there in allowing me to come in with my nonprofit, which is called The Rainmaker Effect, and work with youth on leadership programs. And so our leadership program is starting out with a 5K. And you probably know this, Roman, this is Eric Lopez's. So Eric Lopez works with Roman on a program called Youth in Government. And what I want to do is invite everybody here to come participate. This is on May 14th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a 5K. It's a healthy event. It's so you can run or walk. But it also is wrapped around a street fair and a battle of the bands. And what it's become in the school is it went from the original idea from Coach Rob Thompson, who's the athletic director at the school, to, he originally wanted to have a give-back time for the football team. He wanted to bring in the charitable type of thought process for the boys. And we were going to go work at a food bank or a soup kitchen.
Can you begin to conclude to the thread?
So that turned into, his idea grew into, we want to give back to the community. And that's what this is. So right now, we're working with 40 different students, teaching them how to design a program and run a program like this 5K from scratch. It's the first annual. We're going to be running it every year forever. Okay? So you're invited to the first annual, 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. on May 14th. I'll give the students... I look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you, John. Thank you for your contribution to the community and for coming back and giving back. It's a beautiful way to end the public comment here. So with that, let's go to Councilor Comment. Let's start with Councilor Martine... Well, Ms. City Manager, report. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Thank you, Councilor Martinez.
Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to state for the record that I, as you all know, I was in Washington, D.C. last month on behalf of Naleo. And just, you know, I also was participating at the city council meeting as well. Had a full three days up there and just wanted to make reference on one important thing as we move forward. And I know Mayor Protem will probably talk about it, but, you know, Naleo in partnership with many organizations will be supporting its citizenship fair. So I won't go into detail because I don't want to still thunder from Mayor Protem Sarmiento and him wanting to really lead this here for the city. And so just wanting to state that as the president of Naleo, wanting to make sure, and our mission in wanting to continue, not only to support the things that are happening in the city of Santana, but across the country, and assuring that we are able to make sure that Latinos are able to participate in the democratic process. And so I'll leave that as well. I just wanted to talk briefly. We are in the month of April. Next month, in May, I will be in La Quinta. And I'm honored and a privilege. And I don't say what I'm going to say just to brag, but I think it's important as we continue to put Santa Ana on the map. You know, I will become the first president of, in Santa Ana's history, president of the Southern California Association of Government, which is the largest metropolitan planning organization, not only in the United States, but in the world. Be the first president of Santa Ana to ever have that post, but also the youngest. And so with a lot of power comes a lot of responsibility. And so I will be very busy, starting in May. We represent 191 cities, six counties. And so I will be traveling all six counties, visiting all 191 cities as I move forward as the president of this organization and wanting to make sure that there's equity across the region as it pertains to planning, affordable housing, and public transportation. And so I look forward to continuing to advocate for Santa Ana and Orange County in my position as president. And that will happen on May 5th in La Quinta. For my colleagues, I know there were invitations provided by SCAG if you all would like to come to La Quinta in the festivities of the two days that will be up there. We're also having an active transportation symposium on Wednesday, May 3rd. And we'll be inviting 40 elected officials across the region as well in regards to the momentum that we have across the Southern California region on active transportation. And so I just wanted to state that. And then finally, as we move forward and we're talking about technology, and I know our director, our czar, has been here now for now, I think, going on two months, just wanting to make sure that we can get some updates on where we're at. And number two is assuring that as we move forward, and I think it's very important as we talk about nonprofit organizations, how we actually get data, creating these open data platforms. And I know they're not always as easy to get done because of security. But I think as we move forward and trying to apply for grants and trying to partner with our school districts, with our nonprofit organizations or other government agencies, to have that kind of information available is important because data is important and that's what drives a lot of information so that we then can provide results, you know, in our communities and outcomes. And finally, I just want to thank the Santa Ana High School District. I also have the honor to represent the city on the Metropolitan Water District. And I know our staff is going to be working on a press release with the help of the Metropolitan Water District. I had the opportunity to take about 30 folks on the Colorado River Aqueduct Inspection Tour. And I had the privilege to take school board member John Palacios, who's a president, and also school board member Valerie Mesqua. And, you know, and a lot of other folks that were able to attend on this three-day trip that was very, one, informational but empowering, specifically for the city of Santa Ana and as we move forward to reduce our water consumption and conserve. But the amazing things that are not just happening within the city, but what we're doing in partnership with the school district. And they were able to apply for the turf removal rebate. And it's over $500,000. And it's specifically in two of the high schools that are interconnected. And I think that is Valley and Carr. And so as we move forward, continuing to wanting to make sure that we support our schools. As you know, they have a lot of green grass, the massive amount of schools. I think 29 elementary schools, six or seven intermediate schools, and about eight or nine high schools. And so as we move forward, continuing to try to work with them and see how we can help them essentially remove all their grass eventually. And so I'm just really proud that the Santa Ana High School District is continuing to be leaders and helping us as a city to conserve water. And with that being said, Mr. Mayor, have a great evening.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think everybody's mentioned it, so I might as well mention it myself, right? We've all seen the flyer. And if we haven't get familiar with it, it'll be the last few days before the citizenship fair. So I just want to, I want to call Julie up here in a few minutes just to give us a little bit of background and data on how successful we've been, so much so that we're no longer reaching out for participants, but we're now reaching out for volunteers. So there's been such an overwhelming response to the great work that Alma, Julie, the entire, you know, team up there in getting the word out. We've just done an overwhelming job. And I know that, I want to thank the president of Naleo, who's also our colleague up here, Michelle, our other partners, O'Corde, the Orange County Labor Federation, the Public Law Center, and everybody that's been supportive of the effort. But what we're trying to do this Saturday, April 9th, is to make permanent residents that are eligible voters in the November election this year. And the estimates show that there's 37,000 eligible permanent residents to become citizens here in Santa Ana. So, and in the county, it's even, you know, larger numbers. And it's not restricted to just Santa Ana residents, but it's going to be county-wide. But we do want to focus in on our folks here in Santa Ana. It's going to be completely free. There's going to be one-on-one sessions. So sometimes folks get a little worried about trust and who they're sharing very sensitive information with. These are going to be volunteers that are going to be doing one-on-one sessions with them. There'll be attorneys and legal staff overseeing and monitoring the paperwork that's done. And in the event that we can't get to everybody, there's going to be other efforts by the diocese. There's going to be other efforts by labor federations. So we'll be able to continue the good work. But the idea here is to create as many voters as we possibly can because we realize that, especially in this city, we have such a low voter turnout that it really does put us at a disadvantage because then the resources don't flow to this community. To the extent we can, you know, and whether, you know, nobody's going to be there telling you who to vote for. It's just getting out there and participating because our numbers are always lower and the vote just seems to, you know, to get suppressed. So why don't you go ahead and tell us, Julie, how many people we've already RSVP'd, how many people we need, where it's going to be, and the logistics on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the citizenship fair will take place this Saturday, April 9th, at the Southwest Senior Center. And it's by appointments. And as Mayor Protem mentioned, we're at capacity. We're expecting to register 500 people to obtain the services. However, we've actually registered 510. And we're anticipating a lot more walk-ins. And we do have a plan to provide alternative resources and also a different resource fair the following day in Long Beach. But of course, we are proud to host this event with the city of Santa Ana. We're hoping to secure about 200 volunteers. Most will be legal volunteers. And then the remainder will be general volunteers to assist. There are trainings that will be provided for the folks that would like to volunteer in filling out the N400 forms. But we are still outreach-ing to any of our contacts, any of our city attorneys to volunteer for this event. It's a community effort, helping the community. And we're really proud of this event.
Thank you, Julie. And, you know, no pressure, Madam City Attorney. We just put a really, you know, hard call, a hard sell on you to have your attorneys come out, your paralegals come out. It's very important. I want to thank city volunteers because I know the city's passed around a volunteer sheet so folks can come out. But this is the first one that we're doing. It's really important. This is a very important election cycle, as you all know. Many of our folks are being offended during the low-level rhetoric that's going on at the national level. So it really, I think, is going to instill a sense of patriotism and folks wanting to participate and just have their voice heard. So I just want to thank everybody who's been supportive of that. And we know it's going to be already a big success. Now we're just asking for help to make sure that everybody gets processed. Finally, I just want to close by talking about this homeless problem that, you know, has been mentioned. I read an article the other day, and, you know, a good friend from the Voice of OC is here. And I don't think he was the author of the article. And I think it was a very good article, you know, talking about how now there's some movement, you know, at the Board of Supervisors to start addressing a problem that's been before us and has been really in their front yard for many, many years. And, you know, it's interesting that these movements have happened right at the 11th hour, you know, on the eve of an election. And so I don't know how genuine that effort's been because the problem didn't just occur. It's been here for years. And it really is within their domain and their jurisdiction to address. They're a body that's supposed to deal with social services and be the safety net for the community. And if you look at all the problems that they're dealing with, a mismanagement of CalOptima, which is supposed to provide vital resources for people who are low-income, 70% of those recipients reside here in the city. I don't know how much attention has been given to that. I know I, in the 10 years, almost in the almost 10 years that I've been here, what's unfortunate is that I've never been, you know, really asked to partner with them to try to address the real serious problems there are. You know, they're dealing with nonsense like illegal mailers being sent. And I want to applaud their assessor and their auditor who said that he's going to discontinue funding some of those efforts. And it's just a shambles over there. It really is, you know, something that none of us can be proud of. And we all can remember the three escapees from the Orange County jail. And they were let loose in our community. And, you know, things could have, that story could have been much, much worse. It just didn't, by the grace of God. But, you know, look, they're not funding their sheriff's department and their, you know, their sheriffs have filed actions against their staff. And you have decent men and women in that rank and file not having the support that they need. So it's just a very disappointing, unsettling, you know, set of circumstances when you see folks at the county who are supposed to be providing help to some of our most needy people in the community. And many of them reside here. And they're abrogating their responsibility. They're ignoring the problem. They're addressing it because it's a convenient campaign season. And that's just a very disingenuous way to deal with things. So I'm hopeful that we can now maybe use this opportunity, that they're finally focusing on something that has been a problem at their doorstep. The problem is, is now they want to start remodeling their buildings and maybe creating a new, you know, a new civic center. civic center for themselves or a new campus for themselves. Well, I think they should address the homeless problem first. Because what's going to happen during construction is they're going to push all those folks into our side of the civic center, and they're going to say, "Now it's your problem." And that's going to be at our doorstep. And it's not, this isn't something that wasn't well thought out. I think they're doing this in a very conscious way. And, look, these are the same folks that wanted to drop a homeless shelter in one of our communities without even doing any outreach. And, you know, look, they have a way of shooting first and aiming later. And that's not a good way to operate county social services. So I hope that we can continue to, or we can try to have a different discourse between us. But, you know, I'm just very disappointed at some of the remarks that were made by the former chair of the board, some of his members. It's just, it's unfortunate that they're able to take shots and unwarranted criticism of us, and we're going to remain silent. And I hope we don't, because we've been trying to deal with this homeless issue in a positive way. Nobody's sat on their hands up here. I don't think anybody has said, "It's not a problem." So for those folks across the street to say that about us, I hope that we're all offended by that as well, because we represent all 330,000 residents in this city, and that was a direct criticism of them. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Let's go over here to Councilor Reyna, please.
Sure. I'll keep it brief. First, I don't think any good decisions can come after 10 o'clock. There's no reason for us to be here this late. There's not. There's really not. In saying so, we really need to be water-wise. We take a look at our community, and it looks like a nice, lush, beautiful place. And it truly is, because we use that much water. So we really need to be water-wise in every way we possibly can. I definitely appreciate some of my colleagues' comments in talking about the joint use agreement. This is something that we have been talking about, and we are speaking, for the first time that I could think of, that both entities, both bodies, the school district and the city, are collectively coming together to strategize to figure out what's the best way to moving forward when we talk about joint use agreements. I am in favor of keeping the shell of the school completely open. After-school programs run until 6:00. To my vision, for joint use agreement, would stay on from 6:00 to 10:00. Removing transportation, invisible gang lines, and opportunity for working parents to really get all the assistance that they may need to create a sustained change in that family, rather than just putting, rather than, excuse me, rather than just putting Band-Aids. So the willingness of both parties and both entities to sit there and have the dialogue is absolutely fantastic. I would encourage the community to come on out and share your concerns or your hopes and your visions of this joint use. Again, this is really unique and special. In my time, I've yet to see these two bodies come to the table and have this dialogue, specifically to create this sustained change. So I think it's very exciting on that part. And at the end, of course, shop Santa Ana. Thanks very much.
Councilor Reyna, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It is late. I want to start with thanking our staff for hanging in there, working so hard, both to present reports and all for us prior to the meetings and reporting to us during the meeting, and just staying awake and hanging in there with us, working so hard. We've had a number of different discussions, a number of different ideas. Ultimately, I think what common theme is that council, members of the community, why don't you see a vibrant city? We're proud of the city we live in. We love the city of Santa Ana. There's a lot of positive things going on here. And folks coming back and supporting our young people, and it's a great thing. And we want to be able to continue to fuel that. And I think one of the things that would be great for us to look at as we, in that common theme of supporting our cities, just looking outside the box, thinking outside the box, some of the ideas of staying open later, even if it's violating some type of program, starting in one community center, the joint use with the school district, starting at a few schools. Let's be innovators. Let's look at ways that we can try things, try things out, explore, and see how we can just look to bring some resources and to our community, to our city, to our young people, and see what we can, how we can build upon those attempts in the areas where we do have and experience success. So with that, just want to encourage, as we look at, whether it be Parks and Rec or police, budget going forward, looking at, hopefully, we'll be able to see some of these innovative programs and a few projects that we can get behind, we can pilot, we can fund, as we move forward. And with that, just want to encourage folks to support our city, economy, local jobs. Again, nothing stops a bullet. Like a job, let's support those local jobs here in the city of Santa Ana. Support our young people, those who need a second chance, second start. And with that, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick story for myself, and we'll adjourn. But, you know, every time Councilor Reyna says, you know, "Shop Santa Ana," and then often Councilor Reyna is, you know, reiterates it. So I was in South County, had 21 miles left on the car, and I thought about you guys. And I made it into the city limits with single digits to go, and then I filled up the tank. So whenever we can, we shop every little bit. It's a few more cents, a few more dollars in the local economy. So, look, we don't have to, like, get stranded on freeways, but anything we can do to help the city, we should always be thinking about helping the city. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.